Giving an opportunity for our sound techs over there to have some sound, test, test, test.
Jason, I'm picking up some background like white noise coming.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Hume. I'm trying to get a test round going here with our folks at Metro to see if they can maybe tone down the microphones over there in the chamber. But thank you for that. It sounds like a very light vacuum cleaner. Maybe there's a vacuum cleaner robot, but hopefully it's just a sound issue. Test, test, test. Trying to see how our sound volume is. We're having a bit of background noise on our playback.
You can mute the chamber's mic, but when you play something that has to play audio, you have to unmute it so people hear.
Correct. I mean, that's an option and hopefully it's just a, uh, maybe Metro can just tone the speakers down.
It's, but there's nothing on in there. That's, that's the problem. The mic is on. I mean, it's possible that they are vacuuming.
If we can get our volume levels corrected for the playback that's coming through. We're hearing a little bit of background fuzz through the teleconference on Teams. And just seeing if that same sound effect is coming through over at, on our Metro feed. Test, test, test. As we approach the six o'clock hour. Any of our members of the participating audience that are tuning in, we're just doing some sound tests, making sure if we can get rid of some of the background.
Okay, Jason, are you able to hear me?
I can't hear you, Merrily.
All right, excellent. Do we have everyone here?
Detrick's here.
I see Vice Mayor, I see the Councilman Hume, I see, let me see.
I'm here.
Uh, Councilmember Juan. All right, excellent. All right, um, so let's go ahead and get started. Um, the city council is recommuning from closed session. There's nothing to be disclosed. So I want to go ahead and adjourn the special meeting at, uh, six oh one P M. And want to call the, um, uh, call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting and the Elk Grove Finance Authority, uh, regular meeting, uh, in, with a concurrent agenda on Wednesday, May the thirteenth at six oh two P M. Mr. Clerk, you can take it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do just want to note to anyone that's, uh, tuning in or to our participants through the Teams meeting, we are hearing a little bit of background noise. We have our sound folks looking to see what they can do to address that. So you hear a little bit of a light humming sound. It's something that we're trying to get a handle on, um, and to, to tone that down. But again, like our previous broadcast for folks that are tuned in, when you are not on, uh, in a speaking role, if you can put your device on mute, it will help us with some of that background noise. With that, I'll continue with our opening for the meeting here. Consistent with Executive Order N dash three five dash two zero issued on March twenty first, twenty twenty by the Governor of the State of California. Meeting will be conducted by teleconference only. Meeting location will be the City Council Chamber, but it will not be open to the public. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Channel, Metro Cable Channel fourteen on Friday, May fifteenth at one P M. And Wednesday, May twentieth at six P M. It is being closed captioned and it'll be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode or also put them on the speaker mute mode during the meeting, uh, when you're not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentations to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution number twenty ten dash two, two four, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. City Clerk will run a speaker timer, and after the first two minutes have passed, the City Clerk will state on the audio feed, one minute remaining, indicating one minute remains to summarize comments. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, you may submit an email to be read, sound file to be played, or to provide a phone callback number prior to consideration of the agenda item. And with all of those methods of participation, we will note that the three-minute limit will be strictly observed for all oral comments submitted prior to the meeting and for oral comments made via telephone during the meeting. Each commenter may provide one three-minute comment per item. And with that, Mayor, I think we're here to the start of the meeting. You ready for the call, the roll call?
All right, if you can roll call this.
For the roll call, Councilmember Wen.
Here.
Councilmember Hume. Just testing audio. Do we have you, Councilmember Hume?
Here, yeah.
Councilmember Suon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Here.
And Merrily.
I am here. And so next item is pledge of allegiance. Um, wherever you are, uh, staff, members of the community, uh, councilmembers, see if you could address the, uh, American flag, and you could follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Next item is moment of silence at the beginning of every city council meeting, regular city council meeting, that is. The council would like to invite members of the public to join us in a moment of silence. So members of the public, if you could join the council, please. Thank you very much. And the next item is approval of agenda. Have an agenda. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
There's a second. Right. Do we need roll call on this, Jason?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. As a teleconference meeting, one of the elements is that for all votes that we take, it will be a roll call vote. So with a motion by Hume, second by Wen. For the approval of the agenda, I will start the roll call vote. Councilmember Wen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Suon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Yes.
And Merrily.
Yes. All right, let's move to the next item.
Carries five oh, taking us to section three, our closed session. There are no closed session items on the regular agenda. That'll take us to section four, our presentations and announcements, starting with item four point one, which is a proclamation recognizing May eighteenth to twenty second, twenty twenty as National Public Works Week.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I, I hope you can hear me. This is Bob Murdock, the Public Works Director for Elk Grove. All right, great. Thank you. I want to, I want to thank the council for giving me the opportunity every, every May. Every May, uh, nationally, um, Public Works Week is declared, and it gives me the opportunity, uh, once a year to highlight, uh, what Public Works does, and in particular to, uh, to, uh, express my gratitude for, for the city's public work staff and its contractors for all the work they do, especially during these trying times. So National Public Works Weeks occurs, as I said, every May, and it's really how, it's really, its purpose is to help educate the public about the critical role Public Works plays in their quality of life. A big part of this educational opportunity in Elk Grove has been through Big Truck Day, which has been an in-person event that last year attracted about three thousand participants. However, given the current circumstances, staff has transitioned this to be a virtual event that will last an entire week. So Big Truck Day has become Virtual Big Truck Week. Big Truck Week will offer homeschoolers, specifically young students, an entire week of online fun, every day from Monday, May eighteenth through Friday, May twenty second. Students can experience an up-close look at vehicles and people maintaining the city through daily videos appearing on the city's Facebook and Instagram accounts. Also, students can continue their learning on the city's website where they can download a daily activity game or craft product. And with that, I'd like to move to thanking my staff and highlighting a few of the things that they're, they've been able to accomplish even given the current pandemic. I'd like to start with operations and maintenance. Uh, I'd like to thank Sean Gallagher and, and his terrific staff. They're continuing to improve efficiency, uh, reduce costs, and deliver higher levels of service. In fact, we're moving, uh, quickly from a reactive to a proactive maintenance organization. On tonight's consent calendar is, is, uh, recommended purchase of City Works, uh, an asset management program, an asset management tool that will be critical in moving us, uh, in the direction we need to go. And with that, I'd like to ask Sean to talk about a few of the things, um, that he's been able to do over the past year and, and what's coming up. So Sean.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Sean Gallagher, Operations Maintenance, uh, Manager. Um, and I'd like to tonight kind of highlight a couple of key things that we've, uh, done over the last year, and even a little bit further back than that, um, to kind of highlight some of these efficiencies that we've gained. Um, the first with our pavement management program. Um, as you know, pavement management, um, has lacked the needed funds to really maintain a high level of PCI. So over the last couple of years, we've implemented some new techniques and how to manage our pavement. And, um, I'm happy to say that this year, uh, City of Elk Grove's average PCI is seventy-six, which is the highest in the county. Um, this has really been achieved, um, through staff using, uh, the program more efficiently. Um, it's also been helped from development who's added some new streets to kind of boost it, but also more importantly, in programs we've implemented, um, and how we maintain the streets. Our crack sealing program actually yielded a one-point gain. Uh, we cracked seal nearly fifteen million of square feet last year alone. Um, and this is an annual program that over seven years will crack seal every single street within the city. Um, with this program and other programs, we hope to continue to maintain the city's pavement in the highest level it can be. Um, but there's also other, many other assets that we maintain through O and M, and, um, some of those assets have gone uh, many years without really kind of critical maintenance needed. And, um, with our efficiencies and cost savings, um, that we've been able to create through staff conversions and contract changes, um, I'm going to highlight three new maintenance programs that we're kicking off this year. Um, the first being our strength, our storm drain pipe inspection and cleaning program. This year will clean a hundred thousand linear feet of pipe, uh, removing nearly forty tons of debris. Uh, this will significantly help, um, the areas where the pipe cleaning takes place, reducing flooding, and improving the drainage system. The second program is, um, the restriping of sixty-four miles of lane lines, um, bike lanes, uh, edge lines, and this will take place on every single street west of Franklin Boulevard in town. Uh, many of these streets have gone years without regular striping and maintenance. This will improve safety and make it much more visual to the public. And the last program, um, that we've kicked off, which is a program we've presented previously, which is our overhead street name signs. Um, over the next two months, a hundred and eighty overhead street name signs will be replaced, uh, mostly on Laguna Boulevard, Bond Corridor, and Elk Grove Boulevard, uh, replacing every single overhead street name sign, making it more visual to the public and improving, um, signs that have gone years without proper maintenance. These programs have really come together as part of our conversions and our efficiencies gained, but we've also spent the last two years collecting a lot of data so we can maintain these in the most efficient ways. And matched with our new C M M S City Works that we're, um, recommending award and purchase, um, we hope to continue to maintain all assets, um, in this manner going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, moving on to capital projects, I'd like to thank, uh, Kevin Bucy and Jeff Warner and his staff for, and their staffs for all the work that they do in developing capital projects, getting them awarded, constructed, and accepted. We've seen significant gains in, in production, uh, in those groups over the past four years. About four years ago, we averaged about fifteen, uh, awards a year. We're up to double that now. Last year, we did thirty. Year before that, we did twenty-eight. We're going to be a similar number, uh, this year, it looks like. You know, as part of that, on tonight's agenda, you'll see two significant projects, uh, recommended for award, the nature area, District fifty-six, and Railroad Street, Old Town Plaza. In addition to that, we're, we just don't do large projects. We, we do a number of other things. I'd like to highlight two new traffic controls that are going to be in place next week. The pedestrian signal, signal at the mid-block crosswalk on White Lock Park, White Lock Parkway will be, is scheduled to be operational on May nineteenth. In addition, uh, on May twentieth, we're going to have a new traffic signal control in Elk Grove that we haven't had before. It's going to be a flashing yellow left turn. Um, this is going to be placed at three existing, uh, traffic signals, Harbor Point Drive and Galen Drive, Harbor Point Drive at Renwick Avenue, and Big Horn Boulevard at Lewis Stein Road. Traditionally, on a left turn, you have a left, you have a green arrow that's a protected left turn. That means the opposing traffic stops. You go from green arrow to a yellow phase to a red phase. This new configuration will be a green arrow, then a flashing yellow arrow, then a yellow phase and a red phase. What the flashing yellow arrow allows you to do is turn left, but you must be cautious because the opposing traffic will not be stopping. So you must look for gaps. So you will start the phase with a protected green arrow left turn. It will transition to a flashing yellow arrow, which will be a permissive left turn, and those people turning left will need to ensure they have adequate gaps to cross. Uh, what this will do is ultimately provide, uh, more efficient traffic signals and hopefully additional time, green time for the major through movements. We're going to try it at these three traffic signals for a while, see how, see how things go, get, uh, Elk Grove, uh, residents used to these signals. They're not common. The, the closest agency to us that actually uses these is Roseville. And there's a few others throughout the state. It's not that common, but we think it's, uh, it's a, uh, technology that will help us improve efficiency. And so we're going to do a pilot and hopefully be able to expand it in the future. And I want to, uh, recognize Ryan Chapman for spearheading that, this process. Uh, next is transit. I'd like to thank Mac, uh, Mike Costa, who's basically been a one-person show over the last year. He's almost single-handedly transitioned us from, I mean, to a contracted, uh, transit services with Sacramento Regional Transit, and has led the discussions on annexation as contemplated in that contract with SACRT. And I want to recognize his efforts in modifying transit services during the pandemic, which, in which we've seen drastic reductions, eighty percent, sometimes more in transit ridership. Recycling waste, uh, I'd like to recognize Heather Neff and, and her staff who are working very hard to get ready for organic recycling requirements. They're modifying contract and, and negotiation, negotiating with Republic, uh, and developing a new franchise agreement. And I'd, I also like to highlight that we have the highest recycling compliance rate in the region with a hundred percent of local businesses compliant with recycling and organic waste requirements as of January twenty twenty. And last but not least, I'd like to thank Doug Scott and his staff in Fleet and Facilities who can't tell a work. They've been here every day, day in and day out, making sure all the facilities are, are operational and clean. They've taken on some new responsibilities, including fogging, uh, PD vehicles to keep the police officer safe. So I want to thank Doug and, and his staff for, for all their hard work and and council, I just want to thank you again for giving me this opportunity once a year to recognize my staff and to thank them and, and to, uh, help hopefully the public understand the, the terrific work they do and, and they continue to do every day. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mayor, uh, Mayor, this is, uh, Councilmember Suon. Um, Bob, not a question, but I, I just want to commend all of you and your staff for all, all your efforts. You know, you guys make the city tick, if you will, and, uh, when everything's going right, you never hear from anybody, but the minute something goes wrong, you know, you can bet people notice. So your, all of your hard work is much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well said, Councilmember Suon. Um, I want to also, um, you know, share with you that I think the council as a whole would love to present this resolution um, in person, uh, but, uh, you know, for, uh, or the proclamation, but unfortunately, uh, because of the way we're attending the meeting, uh, I wanted to, um, acknowledge and remind the community that this is National Public Works Week, uh, May the eighteenth through the twenty-second. And, um, we do have a resolution acknowledging, um, the Public Works, uh, you know, department and the work that you guys have been doing. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, read a, a quick, um, uh, note, uh, here, which starts with resolved. The City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims May the eighteenth to the twenty-second as National Public Works Week in the City of Elk Grove, and urges Elk Grove residents and civic organizations uh, to equate themselves with the Public Works Services and, uh, programs. Um, so I mean, this is just a, a small token of our appreciation for the hard work that, uh, you and your department, uh, has continually, uh, done and really, uh, making us look good. So thank you, Bob. Uh, and extend the thank you to each and everyone in your department.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate that.
Uh-huh. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, this is, uh, Vice Mayor Detrick. Hey, Bob, you know, I can't thank you guys enough to, I know it's been said by the other councilmembers, but you know, I, I can send you a message with a problem and whether it's you, Sean, or to whatever, whatever group needs to take care of it. You guys are on it. Uh, the response time is phenomenal. Yeah, a lot of times, seven days a week, you guys are available for a response and, uh, you, you guys got a fantastic team. I thought we had a gr- great team five years ago. It's better now than it's ever been. And I can't thank, thank you guys enough. And make sure, Bob, you, you really expressed to your team that, uh, it is, it is noticed, not just by the council and the rest of the city team, it's noticed by our community. So keep up the great work and thanks again for all you guys do.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? All right, excellent. Uh, thank you. And let's move to the next item.
The next item will take us to item four point two, the Youth Commission's semi-annual update.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Carrie Monte, and I'm the advisor for the Elk Grove Youth Commission. This has been quite the year for this commission. We had a rough start getting our planned events up and running, and then we are full steam ahead for our March Youth Engagement luncheon and April Earth Fun and Sun Event when the stay-at-home orders began. This commission did so much work and they were so disappointed that they were put on hold, but they have, really have stayed positive through it all. I hope they know that even though their, the year did not turn out as planned, their hard work and dedication as commissioners does not go unnoticed. As we thought about the presentation planned for tonight, we had a couple of things working against us. We don't have any new content to report since our last update in January due to the postponed events, and we've all been at home and able to hold meetings. We decided to do something a little different. We created a recruitment type video to share what the youth commission does, what they love about being on the commission, and how to apply. It's perfect timing to share this video as we have half of our commissioners aging out this year. Before I share the video with you, I'd like to say a couple of words to the seniors since we can't present them with plaques as we normally would tonight. Um, I'm very proud of this group of seniors and the hard work they've put into this term. I know you normally ask their future plans, but since we can't do that this time, I thought I'd brag about them for a moment. Uh, Laney Bagwell has been on the commission for four years and is currently the chair. She will be attending Casumus River College in the fall and studying the administration of justice. Uh, Tyson Gonzalez Velazquez has been on the commission for three years and last year held the position, deposition of vice chair. Tyson is planning to attend Sacramento City College, and then will transfer to UC Davis to study political science and communications. Ethan Lau joined the commission this year and will be attending UC Berkeley and majoring in data science. Julia Nguyen has joined our commission this year, and I wanted to thank her for her work in creating the layout for tonight's video. Julia will be attending UC Davis in the fall and will be studying genetics. Um, Brandon Pham is a first-year commissioner who served as historian. I'd like to give a special thanks to him for all his hard work putting together the video you're about to see. Brandon will be attending UCLA and majoring in biology. These are amazing young adults and have been incredible addition to the commission. To the five commissioners returning next year, your passion for serving our community amazes me every day. I hope we can put some of your great ideas into action. It truly has been an honor to support these students this year. I feel very grateful to be a mentor and friend for them and will miss them all very much. And without further ado, I'd like to share with you the recruitment video featuring the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty overview commission members. We hope you enjoy.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, everyone.
We are the Elk Grove Youth Commission.
The Youth Commission is a body under the City Council that serves advocates for the teens of our city. We're like the A S P of your school, but instead of just representing one school, we represent all the teens of Elk Grove. What we do is we input our opinions and just keep tinkering with them and over and over. And eventually we'll try to come to a consensus about what happens by you vote and just that type of thing.
How can you join the Elk Grove Youth Commission? You must be between the ages of thirteen and eighteen, attend middle school or high school, and live within the Elk Grove City or its sphere of influence.
Upon being commissioner, you'll be given a task to deliver a biannual presentation to the Elk Grove City Council, the council members, and the mayor outlining the areas of study, programs, and services that's relating to the youth, and possible events that can be arranged within the city, forums, and discussions.
Lately, our meetings have been taking about, up about two hours a month, and our events can last up to six hours a month. First, meetings are every second Tuesday at six P M. in the council chambers. We also have several subcommittee meetings, meaning that you should be making at least ten hours of time for the youth commission every month. Although the work can be pretty demanding, the more you put into it, the more you get out of it. And I encourage everybody to work their best in the youth commission.
Some things that the youth commission does is we host events to try and get the community more involved. For example, this year, we hosted Party on the Palms to try and get teens to know each other from other schools. We hosted an event about recycling, a social media campaign about recycling, and an event talking about mental health.
In the youth commission, we have different officer positions, including
In the Youth Commission, we have different officer positions, including chair, vice chair, secretary, communications officer, and historian.
If you're interested in joining the Elk Grove Youth Commission, the application process is pretty straightforward. If you meet the requirements described earlier, all you have to do is head onto our website, fill out the application form, and send it in directly to the office of the city clerk. Applications for the Youth Commission are reviewed and selected by the City Council at the City Council meetings. If you do decide to apply, you will have the chance to introduce yourself directly to the City Council at one of these meetings.
One of my favorite things about the Youth Commission is being able to work with like-minded and passionate people who care about improving the lives of those who work and live in their community.
My favorite part of being on the commission is the bonds that I've created and the great experiences that I have. I love that I can take my passion for advocacy and put it into something that will actually make a difference.
It's, it's a place to start if this is something you want to do. So later on in life, let's say you want to be a part of the city council, or you want to serve your community in some way, this is the best places to start and start learning the skills you need in order to make things happen and just make a change in the world when you want things to change.
The commission is a place where I can dedicate my time to helping others, serving the community by creating fun events for everyone to enjoy. Being on the commission is truly what you make out of it. Whatever idea you have in mind, you can propose the idea and carry it out throughout the rest of the year.
By being on the Youth Commission, you can help those who don't have representation, and the youth are the ones who really need it the most.
Check us out on Instagram at Elk Grove Youth Commission and visit our website at www.ellkrovecity.org.
Thank you.
Yeah, please, you know, extend our gratitude for those that are moving on, and I think that's a great video to, to recruit and promote the Youth Commission, so there were no... Members, any questions, comments?
Just want to say congratulations to all the seniors. Great job, Carrie. As always, you do a great job counseling them. I can't believe how grown up they all look now, these last few years.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, that comment. I don't know if it's because of the trying times that we're in right now, but it's making me feel old that I recognize so many of those faces as being these young, bright-eyed kids in the council chambers wanting to be appointed, and now here they are, seniors going off to college. I wish we could celebrate their accomplishments in person, but please pass along for us, Carrie, that we all appreciate their dedication to their community and, and wish them the best and hope that they bring their talents back to the city in the future.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job. I echo everything.
Thank you.
I agree. Carrie, I know this is, this is like a mother hen letting her young ones go, and I know it's always tough on you every year, and you do a great job and appreciate everything you do, as well as all the great things that the youth have done for our community. It is unfortunate that they're, especially for the seniors during this pandemic, that they weren't able to close out the, the last few months, but we're, we're thoughts are with them, appreciate everything they do, and as was already mentioned, please pass on all the best wishes as they move on to college.
Thank you.
All right, excellent. Thank you, everyone. Let's move to the next item. The next item will be section five, our public comment. Participating members of the viewing audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those participating members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. And Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, I do have a series of folks that have submitted prior recorded messages for public comment. I also have some folks that have submitted written comments that have been circulated to the full City Council prior to the meeting, and then we do have someone that has expressed interest to dial in, and I'm just going to touch base with staff if we have that connection ready to go.
We do, Jason.
Excellent. So I believe our first speaker will be Amar Sherghul, and I'd just like to remind our speakers of the three-minute speaker limit.
Go ahead, Mr. Sherghul.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Coming in loud and clear, Mr. Sherghul.
Thank you. My name is Amar Sherghul, an Elkhrove father of three, and first, let me say that, you know, I was pleased to see the report by the Youth, the Youth Commission and Sad, you know, after, you know, all the time that they've put in for many years that we couldn't celebrate them properly. So kudos to them and, and the work they do, and thank you to city staff and the council for making room for them and providing resources for them to have activities. I think it's really valuable and the city does a, a really good job with that. On March fourth, two thousand eleven, two sick grandfathers were murdered in Elk Grove, Serinder Singh and Kameer Singh Adwal. Recently, the Sacramento News and Review did a long-form article describing what happened in two thousand eleven, and then also describing what really is a remarkable effort by the Elk Grove Police Department to devote resources and take a fresh look at all of the evidence, see whether those unsolved murders can be addressed and whether, you know, there is some information or science that's available to, to take another look at what happened then. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Chief Albright for taking a look at it and devoting that time, and to, to everyone there, Detective Barr, for putting all the time into it, and the city for supporting those efforts. You know, although we still mourn those losses and we hope those crimes are solved, I still remark on many occasions to others that it, it was a time that, in sadness, that the city of Elk Grove also came together to support those families and to support the sick community, and then Mayor Detrick, you know, made sure that whatever resources were available were provided, whether it was investigation or to the family themselves. And it's just really heartening to see that that spirit continues. So thank you to everyone that was involved, and I, I really appreciate it on behalf of those families and the sick community. Thank you.
Thank you, Amar.
And if the City Council will indulge me a little bit, I am kind of monitoring my email that's coming in. I'm not seeing a lot of comments coming in, but I am going to pull up some audio that has been provided prior to the meeting and requested to be played during general public comment. So just a moment while I hit all the right buttons to make sure I'm sharing. And again, there, you may hear that background noise. It's a feature that we're not able to kind of shake in terms of what we've been hearing for our audio items, but let me make sure that these are coming through. The first is from, I think it's Kimberly Stewart-Betal.
Hi, this is Kimberly Stewart-Betal. I'm not sure if there is a particular section to put this comment in, but if there is, I would like it to be read into or played for public record. I believe that every position elected should have a, a limit to the amount that any campaign should be able to have in campaign contributions by any one person or entity. So, you know, we, we have had issues with elected officials, perceived or otherwise, getting large sums of money from individuals or businesses for their campaigns, and that needs to end. We need to make sure that everybody has the same footing, that everybody is able to raise the funding that they need for their campaigns in an equitable way. And by doing that, we can make sure that, that our elected officials aren't just buying elections. Thank you.
And our next comments from Mr. Randy Becker.
Hi, Jason, this is Randy Becker. I'm calling in regards to tonight's council meeting. I would like to leave a message that could be played for five-point-zero public comment. I'll address it as follows. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, my name is Randy Becker, and I'd like to address you on the matter of, the change of the meetings seem to have changed some procedures, and I think in some respects it's unfair, and it leaves the situation open for others to take advantage of it, which has already happened. When we have a regular meeting, citizens and/or anyone wanting to speak must fill out a blue copy and put their name down, and their name is read aloud. In the last meeting, there was a number of, there was a number of individuals that spoke that wanted to remain nameless. I think that is highly unfair, and it doesn't give transparency to the community. I think moving forward, we need to make sure that citizens state their name, state whether or not they're residents and/or from a district within Elk Grove, or if they're outside of Elk Grove. Therefore, they're not part of the public record and just not anonymous. I would stop a lot of business comments that seem to be acting on some of these issues that are unnecessary. It's unfair, and it needs to be better, not only from the public point, but also from the citizen's point. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time, and once again, thank you for your service. Bye.
And just to our viewing public, there are times, we are receiving these files externally. Sometimes they are by phone call. They're messages that are left on a phone messaging system, or they're files that are submitted via an audio recording program. We found audio recordings are the best. These others can, other phone calls, or the phone call reception or background noise can cause interference, and I think that was an example of what happened at the end of that comment. But I do have another, and I want to say it's Ms. Saterne, and I'll pull that one up.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, and City Council members and staff. My name is Diane Saterne. I reside at eight-five-four-five Medina Way in Elk Grove, directly across the street from the Monterey Trail High School. My husband and I are the original owners of our home. Our family has resided here in Elk Grove since August of two thousand five, when our home was completed and built. During the last recession in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, unlike the majority of homeowners in our city and our neighborhood, whom had all walked away and abandoned their homes, we continue to remain here in Elk Grove. During the last recession, my husband was permanently laid off in two thousand nine and was out of work for nearly five years. Yet, we continue to fight through bloodshed tears to keep our home and to remain here in Elk Grove. We are very proud citizens of Elk Grove and our neighborhood, and we have absolutely no plans of leaving here. Recently, we had learned about the permit request from AT&amp;T and its affiliates to install a cell phone antenna located at the high school at eight-six-six-one Power Inn Road, which is directly across the street from our house. Permit application number is one-nine-dash-zero-seven-two-two-seven for five cell antennas. The city has failed to do its due diligence in researching the negative effects of regulatory powers of cell antenna transmissions. Additionally, unbeknownst to the residents of Elk Grove and the residents here in my neighborhood, the city has not been transparent with the permitting process and has kept it behind closed doors. This is completely unfair, and as citizens of our community, we should have been aware of this request and have every right to know about it. We absolutely do not want a cell tower across the street from our homes, which would send constant post-modulated microwave magnetic radiation into our homes twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The installation of these cell towers will pose a hazardous adverse effect on, effect on all of our health. We are asking the city to please do not issue a permit until the city performs their due diligence in its research and has established specific regulations to mitigate the harmful effects of the constant radiation emissions. Again, the city must ensure all affected residents are made aware of all discussions pertaining to this matter. We're asking the council to please deny the application and put forth on the agenda a regular council meeting for specific requirements and regulations regarding this issue. Last night, I had sent petition signatures, including my very own signature, a total of thirty-seven residents here just off of Medina Way. So please, we ask that you please consider this matter and our concerns and take this matter into ser- serious consideration. Thank you for your time.
And I have a final prerecorded comment from Mr. Mark Graham.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham, Elk Grove. Why do residents in many cities across California get more protection against hazardous cell antennas than Elk Grove residents? Why do many cities in California have more control over the permitting of cell antennas than the City of Elk Grove? The answer to both questions is the same. The reason is that those cities understand telecommunications law and the extent of the city's powers to regulate cell antennas. They have put in the effort and they have asked specific questions to understand that. With all due respect, this council did not do that. You do not investigate the city, the extent of the city's powers to regulate cell antennas. The direct result is that the interests of the city and many residents go unprotected. It is not too late for the council to change that. I'm asking you to change that now. Last night, each of you received by email copies of petitions by thirty-six residents of Medina Way on Elk Grove. As you know, on December thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, AT&amp;T applied for a permit for a cell antenna at Monterey Trail High School, eighty-six-six-one Power Inn Road. This is right across the street from these residents' homes. The petition asks the council to put several specific proposed changes to the Elk Grove Municipal Code on the agenda of the May twenty-seven meeting for as soon as possible. The council did not discuss any of these issues ever. The council hurried to approve the recommendations of the staff on August two thousand, two thousand nineteen, which were the staff's proposed zoning code amendments and master license agreement with AT&amp;T. Unfortunately, the staff's proposals omitted the residents' recommendations. The city has a standing policy to oppose any bill in Sacramento that would limit local control, the city's powers, as you should. And yet, here it is, right here in our own city, a major limit of local control, and you approved it. Your ordinance nineteen dash two thousand nineteen conflicts with that policy. The ordinance also conflicts with the interpretation of the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six by the federal courts, by the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit and the other circuits, for that matter. The city has the power to require an applicant to prove that a proposed cell antenna will close a significant gap in coverage, and will do that using the least intrusive means. The city also has the power to state what types of evidence it will accept as proof. In particular, it should only accept drive test data as proof of a gap in coverage, and should only accept dropped call logs as proof of insufficient capacity. You don't even know that, although I told you several times. You failed to write that into the zoning code. Please do that now. Bob Murdock and Jeff Werner in the Department of Public Works are reviewing the AT&amp;T application for a cell antenna permit, but you have not given them the tools that they need to do their job. Please take action, follow up, and respect the wishes and the requests of these residents. Thank you.
And with that, that concludes the prerecorded comments that were submitted prior to the meeting, and in a check of my email, I don't have any further comments submitted. Jason, this is-
Jason, this is Steve. Bob, can you, can you bring up to the council to speed on the progress of this particular permit?
Sure, Mayor. Bob Murdock, Public Works. We're still reviewing it. We're, they had made an original submittal about a month or so ago and we needed additional information. I'm not sure if we've received it yet. I know we have not issued the permit. Still being processed. But it is a location that was part of AT&amp;T's agreement. It's one of the locations specifically called out. So as long as they meet the requirements of obtaining a permit, then staff, I think, is obligated to issue it, but we're not quite there yet.
Even considering the objection by the local residents?
I guess I would ask John Hobbs to chime in here where he thinks appropriate, but I think.
Mr. Mayor, generally, the answer is yes. We certainly respect the concerns of the residents. This site was specifically identified in the master license agreement and as such, it's subject to ministerial approval by the Public Works Department. Now, there is a review process for that and the Public Works Department is going through that review process. But if the application meets the technical requirements of the master license agreement, then it will, it will need to get approved and it sounds like that that's still in process. The, like I said, and, and Mr. Murdock said, this site was identified in the MLA. There were numerous public hearings on this topic generally and, and specifically on the MLA that identified this site.
Now, does the, in the, the rules and procedure that we put in place, does the city council have the authority to reject this particular site?
Well, I suppose that you could bring back the MLA and amend it, but at this point, we have a contract with AT&amp;T and so it would require their consent to amend the master license agreement. They would have to agree to that in light of the fact that we have a, a binding contract.
I see. Now, Mr. Murdock, has there been any outreach to the residents and Ms. Saterne?
No, that's not, not currently part of the process. As long as the site is approved as part of the MLA, city staff just moves forward with it as a, as a pre-approved site.
Okay. My, my gut feeling is that perhaps maybe they don't understand the existing agreement. My gut feeling really is if we reached out and explained to them the circumstances, there will be a better understanding?
We certainly can do that. We, we certainly can, can contact a resident that, that submitted the petition and others and try to help explain what, what the small cell is and, and is not and we can approach it from that, that standpoint. And we can, you know, continue to work on the permit until we, until we get through the process of talking to the residents.
I think that will be helpful because my read is that perhaps maybe they don't fully understand the agreement that's already in place and, you know, are, anything above and beyond, we would need to go back to AT&amp;T. I think that's important for them to understand.
Okay. Certainly can do that.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
Bob, I think it's also important that we let them know what we, how many meetings we've had relative to this because the allegations were that we never did our due diligence on this.
Yes. Well, well, as part of helping them understand what's actually being proposed, we, we do that as well. We'd go back and help them review the, all the meetings that we've had and the notices that were, public notices that were issued.
Thank you, Bob.
Sure.
All right. Let's move to the next item.
And that next item will be Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My pleasure to present some items for you this evening. Per the council's direction, at the April 22, 2020 meeting, city staff has reached out to our lobbyists to inquire about the process for requesting a delay in the implementation of SB 1383. As you recall, this is the mandatory organics recycling program, likely resulting in utility increases between 35 to 50% for our residents. Staff has drafted an issue paper and is working with our state lobbyists to identify the best strategy for reaching out to legislators. Several local jurisdictions have already expressed a willingness to provide support. Staff will provide further updates as they become available. This week is National Police Week. As a sign of respect, you may see officers wearing morning bands across their badges this week to honor those brave men and women who have paid the ultimate sacrifice in service to their communities. The police department has recognized and celebrated over 200 local graduates through their senior spotlight campaign on social media. Congratulations to the class of 2020 and their families. The Sacramento Valley section of the American Planning Association has notified us that the city's general plan update has earned award of excellence in the category of comprehensive plan large jurisdiction. The review panel regarded the organization of the document as innovative and crafted in such a way that made it easier for the public to read and understand. A ceremony will be held later this year. Thus, recognition also makes the city's entry eligible for the statewide award. Like to provide, take a few minutes to provide an update to the council and the community on the city's response to COVID-19 since my last update on April 22. The current health order in Sacramento County is in effect through May 22. We'll continue to provide updates to our residents on any changes to that health order as they become available. Sacramento County is currently in the process of preparing a letter to the state asking to fully implement stage two, which would include restaurant dining and other in-store retail opportunities with certain restrictions. The county expects a response from the state next week. The city hosted a well-attended virtual town hall meeting with Sacramento County Public Health Officer Dr. Olivia Casiri, Mayor Lee, Casuma's Community Service Board President Alenda Fuentes, staff and other elected officials from both the city and the Casuma CFD on Tuesday, April 28. Over 150 individuals participated and the webinar was extended due to the numerous questions received. You may have noticed on Elk Grove Boulevard and Laguna Boulevard, new street banners showing appreciation to essential workers in our community. The banners are replacing the typical summer event banners. If you haven't seen them, please drive by and take a look. The city continues to push out frequent updates through all available online platforms and residents interested in learning and getting more information about how the city is responding and other important updates that may affect them, they can go to the city's website, elkrovecity.org/coronavirus. Relating to our business community, businesses and employees are encouraged to visit elkrovecity.org/covid19biz for latest information about financing and assistance programs and helpful FAQs and to sign up for our business-wise economic development email updates. Businesses can also email our economic development staff directly at econdev@elkrovecity.org or 916-627-3338. On April 8, the city council authorized participation in the LIFT Investing COVID-19 Emergency Investment Relief Program for local businesses. This program provides low-interest flexible loans for Elk Grove businesses negatively impacted by COVID-19. Applications were accepted beginning April 28. To date, 13 applications have been received by Elk Grove businesses. All businesses who applied have been forwarded to program lenders for consideration and possible underwriting. Initial loan decisions will be made in the next two weeks. If you're interested, please visit the LIFT Investing website at liftinvesting.com for more information and to apply. Recently, the city promoted a regional survey hosted by Greer Sacramento Economic Council to gauge the impacts of COVID-19 on local businesses. In addition, City of Elk Grove is in the process of surveying its 50 largest businesses to understand how COVID-19 has impacted their operations. The information gathered will help the city and regional economic development leaders to better understand the impact of the coronavirus on all industry sectors and will provide critical data for economic recovery planning. To date, the Office of Economic Development has received 246 general business inquiries since March 13, most related to COVID-19 impacts. All inquiries have been responded to and assistance has been provided directly by staff and the businesses have been referred to other organizations for assistance where appropriate. Regarding social services and our business community, the city joined a first-in-the-nation meal delivery service to support Elk Grove's older adults and local restaurants. The Great Plates Delivered Program was introduced on April 24, 2020 by Governor Gavin Newsom and the city has rolled out our first meal deliveries today. The Great Plates Delivered Program has two purposes, to help seniors and other adults at high risk from COVID-19 to stay home and stay healthy by delivering three nutritious meals a day and provide essential economic stimulus to local restaurants struggling to stay afloat during COVID-19. Today, we delivered 303 meals to 101 participating seniors in the program for local restaurants. We continue to add new seniors and also new restaurants to the program, but there is still more, more availability in the program. So if you know seniors who live in Elk Grove that would like to participate in the, in the program, please direct them to the city's website, elkrovecity.org/greatplates. City staff hosted a drive-through donation drive on April 23rd and 24th, collecting much-needed items to give to the Elk Grove Food Bank, Elk Grove Heart and Chicks in Crisis. Over 70 vehicles, as well as city staff, provided much-needed donations to these community organizations. City staff was also pleased to extensively promote the big day of giving for all of our nonprofit partners that have been negatively impacted by COVID-19. We conducted several social media posts and encouraged our staff and residents to donate. Our 24 participating nonprofit partners received over 3,600 individual donations and raised over $630,000. Sacramento Splash Habitat for Humanity, 91 St. Inc., Elk Grove Food Bank, the Senior Center and Meals on Wheels each raised over $40,000 each. Three of the city's homeless residents have been moved into the county-run motel shelters. Our navigator is actively enrolling more residents and working on permanent housing plans with those in the motels already. The motel shelters are serving all people 55-plus and those under 55 with pre-existing health conditions. A little bit on the legislative and lobbying front. The House recently unveiled the fifth coronavirus stimulus package. This was introduced. This is, it's called the Health and Economic Recovery Omnibus Emergency Solutions Act, or the HEROES Act, HR 6800, which will buy $3 trillion to a myriad of programs to provide support amid COVID-19, including support for local governments. The House is expected to vote on and pass the HEROES Act on this Friday. However, unlike the first four coronavirus relief packages, this package will be subject to negotiations with the Senate and the White House. The Republican-controlled Senate leadership has signaled they want to go slow on another aid package, arguing that they want first to the impact of trillions of dollars already approved to fight the virus. While the Senate hasn't pinpointed the exact time when they will take up another relief package, it doesn't appear likely to occur this month. And final section is related to city government-related things, the city of Elk Grove. So city staff is preparing for many city commission, committee meetings to resume this month. We will be utilizing Zoom platforms for easy participation. Residents can visit the individual commission and committee webpages to see the agenda and relevant Zoom link and confirm the meeting day and times. City staff is also working towards reopening City Hall with our Business Reintegration Planning Team. All city operations are thinking ahead and planning to restore onsite city operations with the approval and direction of the Governor and Sacramento County Health Officer. As a reminder, nearly all of the city's services remain open for business, even if they're done online in a virtual capacity or, or over the phone. We continue to provide information on mobile testing sites where residents that are interested in getting tested for COVID-19 can participate in preliminary online screening at wwwprojectbaseline.com. Screening is now modified and anyone 18 years or older living in Sacramento County can get tested for COVID simply by completing the screening survey. Survey is no longer symptom-driven. And finally, on May 27, city staff will be presenting council and our residents our preliminary FY 2021 budget for consideration. This considers revenue reductions in fiscal year '21 of approximately $13.7 million and approximately $5.6 of our general fund. Total impacts will be determined by the length and severity of the recession or results from COVID-19-related economic impacts. Been holding all-hands staff meetings with both represented and unrepresented employees to ensure they understand the city's budget projections and why cuts are needed. City staff has done a great job of making cuts to budget requests while still maintaining important core services to our community. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Any questions? I don't hear any questions, so let's move on to the next item. Thank you, Jason.
And that next item will be Section 7, Council Comments, Reports and Future Agenda Items.
Okay, let's start off with Councilmember Huen.
Thank you, sir. As my day job, I again run a nonprofit organization, so we are in a central. We provide social services to our community. Many of the work I've been doing lately has been around language access because so much of the information has been out there and it's not in the various different languages that we forget a community that needs access to the information as well, too. So I've been really busy around that. As you know, there are millions of people that are unemployed, so our offices remain open for folks who don't have internet access or computers so they can come in and apply for unemployment and we can assist them in, in that process, help them navigate through that because it could be a little cumbersome. Lastly, food access. So one of the things that we were able to do is partner with Farm Fresh to You to provide six pounds of food boxes of fresh fruits and veggies to the community. It's going to be a six-week, weekly thing, six-week, once-a-week thing that families can come by and pick up a box. I would love to bring this to Elk Grove and so I've reached out to our former mayor Gary Davis from Elk Grove Community Council and Ms. Inez Whitlow from Chicks in Crisis to see if they would be interested in doing a food distribution from Farm Fresh to You, the boxes that they provide. Because I know that the Elk Grove Food Bank is completely overwhelmed at the moment, so if we can have other nonprofit community organizations in our district or in our, in our city, take on some of this to alleviate some of that, I've reached out to them. They both agreed to doing it and so I will be in contact and watch for more information about when that happens and where they can pick up the food boxes. That's all I have, sir.
All right, let's move to Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. Not much to report. I had a Capitol Southeast Connector Joint Powers Authority meeting the Friday following the last city council meeting. Pretty much just an update on the, the status of the different projects in place. The ED sent a note to me privately that he was working with Kevin Bucy of our staff to put together a grant application for the Transportation Authority for the Grant Line Road Improvement Project to make it a little more compelling, so that's good. Had an RT meeting just on Monday night. Nothing to report other than the significant budget woes, but the good news is it looks like that we won't have to dip into the reserves that we've spent the last several years being diligent about building backup thanks to quite a bit of relief funding from the CARES Act. There are social distancing protocols being put in place on all of the public transportation vehicles to, to keep people distanced from one another as they, as they share the, the rides wherever they're going. And all of the drivers' morale seems to be in fairly high spirits and they're taking appropriate steps to keep themselves safe. I don't have anything for, I was not able to make the sandboard meeting this morning because I am back at work. The governor apparently declared that I am essential again and so I went back to work and had to put in a little extra time to, to play catch-up and so I wasn't able to make the meeting this morning. Nothing as far as a future agenda item, but I just want to say that, you know, one of the things that I think has been a silver lining during these times is that for children who are experiencing a birthday during these stay-at-home orders are able to have the first responders come by and do a drive-by of their house. And so Chief, I just want to express my sincere gratitude to the, the men and women in our department that make themselves available to come by and go code three for just a second in order to brighten up these kids', kids' days and, and let them know that their day is special, even though they're not allowed to have their friends over for a party. So I just think it's something neat that this community is doing and I assume that that's something that is available on our website to point people in the direction if they would like to make that request.
Yeah, thank you. It's, it's our pleasure. We don't have the list on our website, but certainly to contact any of us through the various emails on the website would be appropriate.
That'd be great. It's just, it's a special, I mean, it happened on the one court over from me and so I hopped on my bike that has one of those old Ooga horns on it and went down there and tried to brighten up the kids' day a little bit, but I was nothing compared to the fire truck and police cars that drove by there. So, you know, obviously, we don't want to pull away from the important duties that, that these folks do in their day-to-day jobs, but nonetheless, to, to take that a little bit of time to show them that the community's thinking about these kids, I think, is a, a good thing. So thank you very much for that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Terrific. That's pretty awesome. All right. Councilmember Sun.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, since our last meeting, we had a Library Authority Board meeting. Not much, nothing to report there. We had a State Card Transportation Committee meeting. We spoke about the way State Card currently awards some of their competitive funds, so there's some debate there between some of the jurisdictions about whether or not bringing some of those monies to more formulaic, so more guaranteed funding to Elk Grove, Sac County, Sac City. some more guaranteed funding to Elk Grove, Sac County, Sac City, and others might be more beneficial. So we'll see what that comes back with because it takes a lot of time and effort for our staff to prepare. We're not always successful in terms of criteria. We had a mega-region meeting. This is the extension of Secog where the vice chair and myself and then another Secog board member meet with the other council governments in San Joaquin County and Metropolitan Transportation Commission, trying to link the planning documents between our, our jurisdictions to better, bettering transportation and, and housing and jobs. So we, you know, we were talking about what's, you know, how are we supposed to, how are we going to evolve after this COVID epidemic and plan for our future, the, the new normal, so to speak. Finally, tomorrow, we have STA where we will take final consideration of the measuring ordinance, send it forward to the county for their consideration to put it on the ballot in November. I wanted to, I think all the councilmembers got an email from Manager Perry to the chamber and wanted to kind of tie it to some residents in Elk Grove that reached out to me about the possibility of maybe opening up Elk Grove Boulevard when, when we're able to open, letting some of, some of these businesses line the streets. And so there, you know, with the new, the new criteria, having to space things out, maybe enabling Elk Grove Boulevard and Old Town to be, to be some of that areas that they can move into. So I wanted to get council support of that and maybe have staff look into it. I know there'll be, there'll be some issues to contend with, but it might be worthwhile to look into if council will be supportive of that.
And supportive of that.
I'd be all for it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Sue. Vice, Vice Mayor Detrick.
I really don't have anything to report. I've been, all the meetings have been canceled except anything being done remotely. I've been working remote from home now for two months, and I continue doing that, and that's all I have.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Hugh, I, since I'm the alternate, I did fill in for the sewer this morning. And just to give you a heads up, the next three meetings has been canceled, and so we won't meet again until the last week of July. What was monumental in our decision on the Sacramento Area Sewer District Board was that there was a unanimous approval of an interim urgency ordinance authorizing the district engineer to waive sewer rates, delinquency penalties in relations and in response to COVID-19. So, you know, many of the directors were quite proud that the district engineer had the foresight to push it forward, and it was easily passed. So real, real proud of that. The other thing that I'd like to share with the council is that the provisions, the Elk Grove Provisions Committee, which was put together by myself and the vice mayor, has been meeting regularly, and real proud to, to share with the council that last Thursday in front of City Hall, there was a gathering of resources and distribution of it to the senior care facilities. Off the top of my head, I want to say fifteen senior care facilities that have a shortage of personal protection equipment. A lot of the masks was distributed to them, and the bulk of it, though, was split between the Dignity Health and also the Elk Grove Food Bank. All of the face shield and the goggles went directly to Dignity, and the remaining masks went to Elk Grove Food Bank in the event that any members in the community who needed a mask and could not find it could pick one up at the Elk Grove Food Bank. So I'm real proud of the work that this committee has been doing, and that's the latest development, and so wanted to share that with the council. And I think that is it. Let's move to the next item.
That will take us on to Section Eight, the Consent Calendar Items. And under the consent calendar, I do not have any pre-submitted comments recorded or written, and in a quick check, I am not pulling up anything on my email either.
Okay, so want to open and close public comment opportunity. And councilmembers, we have a consent calendar. What's that? Do we have a motion, Vice Mayor?
Staff recommendation.
Got a motion by the Vice Mayor, got a second by Councilmember Wayne. All in favor, roll call.
Go with that roll call vote for the motion by Detrick, second by Wayne for the approval of the consent calendar items. Councilmember Wayne?
Yes.
Councilmember Hugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Sue?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And the consent will pass, five oh.
All right, let's move to the next one.
With that, that will take us on to Section Nine of our agenda, the agenda of the public hearings, starting with item nine point one, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the City of Elk Grove zoning map and resolution approving a tentative parcel map and true removal permit for the one zero zero four nine Bond Road project. And Antonio, it looks like your screen sharing is doing well, but we're not hearing you right now. And for any of our members of the viewing public, well, I think what's happening, our staff are trying to connect and make sure they have a connection. It looks like their PowerPoint made it up, but we don't have the staff member there. He can't unmute himself.
Okay, we're not progressing? Just duck?
We're looking, I think we've got him muted. We're going to go to unmute him and see what we can do here.
Okay.
And thanks for your patience. This is part of the wonderful world of teleconferencing. What we have is our staff members online, but it's just an issue with comms. Their audio is not functioning quite as we're hoping to.
Hello, Jason, can you hear me now?
There we are, Antonio. You are now on board. If you just want to full-screen your presentation, we should be ready to go.
Okay, apologies for that technical difficulty. So, good evening, Mayor Lee, members of the city council. Antonio Ablog, Planning Manager, here to present to you the one zero zero four nine Bond Road project. For this project, the applicant is requesting a rezon of approximately ten acres from the AR five zone to the AR two zone. Along with that, they are requesting a parcel map to divide two existing parcels into four parcels and also a remainder parcel. Each of those parcels will be approximately two acres in size. Furthermore, they are requesting a tree removal permit for the removal of two trees of local importance. Before you, you can see the subject site. It's currently developed with a single-family home on a large lot. That single-family home will become a remainder lot, and the four new parcels will be to the north and south of that. The subject site, as I mentioned, one zero zero four nine Bond Road on the north side of Bond Road between Bradshaw and Grantline Road. You can't, this is the rezon exhibit. Again, this is an AR five, five acres per parcel. They're requesting to rezon that to AR two, which is a two acres per parcel, which is consistent with the general plan designation, rural residential. Before you, you can see the tentative parcel map. We've had to adjust the orientation to fit this on the screen. You can see parcels one, two, three, and four with the remainder parcel in the center. What I've done with this map is highlighted an, an existing twenty-five-foot access easement that was created quite a few years ago. And this twenty-five-foot access easement actually provides rights on that easement to both the subject site property owner and the property owner to the west of this property. They share rights to that easement. And as far as the property to the west, they currently do use that access easement to access their horse facility, which is on the northern part of their site. There is a Y in that driveway that, that turns off so they can access their property to the west. As far as the tree permit, we did work with the applicant. There are a total of eight valley oak trees within that existing driveway easement. Even though the, the owner does have rights to that easement, we did work with them to save as many of those trees as we could. In green, that grove of six trees, you see those will be retained. Those are some of the larger, more mature tree, oak trees on the site. The two Xs in red denote the oak tree removals. Those are smaller, some of the smaller trees, and the diameter of those trees equals a total of nineteen inches. There's a condition on the project that they'll be required to mitigate for the removal of those trees on the site itself. As far as Sequoia Staff finds that no further review, the environmental review of the project is required, the rezon and tentative parcel map are consistent with the general plan designation for the site. Furthermore, the project is subject to erosion control and tree protection pursuant to the Elk Grove Municipal Code. And also, they're subject to conducting Swainson's Hawk surveys if necessary and possible mitigation if found to be Swainson's Hawk habitat, foraging habitat. Further, furthermore, all new home construction resulting from the project will be required to comply with the city's climate action plan. This project was presented to the, the Planning Commission last April. The commission did vote four to one to recommend that the city council approve both the rezon and tentative map. They did make that recommendation with a few amendments to conditions. Conditions twenty-four and twenty-five were amended, and those amendments were made so that the eventual improvements tied to the map would be consistent with the future Bond Road section. That section is on the screen before you. You can see on the north side of, of Bond Road where the project is located indicates one travel lane with a paved shoulder with also an unpaved section and a roadside ditch. That will be the future improvements that will be required on the site. There was also a condition number twenty-seven that was amended. This condition was amended to add a deceleration taper to the driveway. The driveway is shown before you. With the current condition, you can see there's a, a power pole and some trees that would affect the construction of that due to that condition. The applicant still is willing to provide some kind of widened driveway to allow larger vehicles and vehicles with trailers to turn off Bond Road. However, he does have concerns about kind of a full right turn pocket, if you will, just considering the, the trees and infrastructure that's in place, but he's still willing to, to provide a widened driveway to allow for movements of, of larger trucks. Again, the commission voted four to one to recommend approval. And just a note on that opposing vote, that vote was not in opposition to the actual project itself. The commission was in support of the project, however, that commissioner did not feel that the condition for the deceleration taper was appropriate for the project and felt that just a driveway with widened driveway that would allow turning movements for larger vehicles would be more appropriate and more consistent with those types of driveways in the rural area. Leading to both the commission meeting and tonight's planning, and tonight's city council meeting, we have received comments, both verbally and written comments, from a neighbor of the project. Jason did provide the latest written comments via green sheet. I just want to summarize those comments before I conclude my presentation. One of the comments we heard about this project is regarding drainage and concerns that when this project is developed, it will create adverse drainage conditions on neighboring properties. For this project, it's a parcel map. They are not providing any improvements at this time. However, pursuant to Municipal Code, Chapter sixteen, they will need to have all their drainage reviewed and, and approved once each lot is developed. That's the normal course of action for a parcel map. Since they aren't proposing construction or improvements at this time, it's, it's really difficult to ascertain exactly what drainage will be needed without the physical construction to be able to analyze that drainage fully. Furthermore, there was concern with the twenty-five-foot roadway easement. Again, I mentioned the existing twenty-five-foot roadway easement on the west side of the property does provide rights to access that full property line to both the subject site and the site to the west. This project will not affect rights of either property owner. The property owner to the west will continue to, to have access to that, and this project will not preclude any rights to that easement. There was another comment regarding fencing. The property owner to the west does have horses on the property, and there's a concern about the fencing between the subject site and that property. Currently, there's no code provisions to require this project construct, to construct new fencing. The applicant has stated a willingness to repair any fencing that gets damaged during construction for this project. However, when that was presented to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission opted not to, to place that condition on the project. Furthermore, the property owner to the west is, has requested advanced notice of, of construction. And again, the, the applicant has stated they have no concerns in providing advanced notice of, of construction. They see that, that as a kind of a neighborly item that they're willing to do. And that, again, that was something that the Planning Commission opted not to place a condition on the project for. And finally, regarding agricultural uses and equestrian uses, we had, we heard a concern about right to farm and that we've heard this concern before, that with new residents moving out to the rural area, sometimes there's concerns about existing agricultural uses and nuisances related to those. As far as the Elk Grove Municipal Code, the Elk Grove Municipal Code does allow agricultural uses and animal keeping by right in the agricultural residential uses. So those agricultural, agricultural uses are already protected by the zoning code. Furthermore, Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter fourteen, also protects those agricultural uses and states that those existing agricultural uses, so long as they abide by both the Elk Grove Municipal Code and any other county codes for, for horsekeeping and agriculture, those uses cannot become nuisances. So, so we feel it's already covered by the Elk Grove Municipal Code. So, so we feel it's already covered by the Elk Grove Municipal Code. With that, staff does recommend that the city council find no further environmental reviews required. Under SEQA pursuit to state SEQA guidelines 15183, which is consistency with the general plan, adopt an ordinance approving a rezone and adopt a resolution approving a tentative parcel map and tree removal threat for the 10049 Bond Road project. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Are there any questions for Antonio?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, councilman.
Thank you. As you know, Antonio, the property owners to the west have been in contact with me and I've tried to forward their concerns on to you as much as I can. And then they've circled back since the planning commission. So I just have a couple of follow-up questions to address some of their concerns. My first question is, is I understanding it correctly from them and from the map as I read it, that the easement which is being used is the main access for the rear parcels is, that's actually the property of the owners to the west. The easement runs across their property. Is that true?
So I brought up the tentative map again. What staff has found is that there's an overall easement width of 50 feet. There's 25 feet on this subject property and 20, 25 feet on the neighboring property. However, both property owners retain rights to that full 50 feet. So the property owner to the west has rights to the 25 feet highlighted here. That, those rights will not expire with this map. They'll be, they'll continue to have that access right. But it's, it's odd that it is on this subject site, even though this is not part of their property. They have access to 25 feet of the neighboring property through that easement.
And so I guess what I'm looking at, and I'm trying to drill down, just so you know where I'm going with this line of questioning. I'm trying to, to drill down to a parity or an equity issue. And that they're taking advantage of the 25 foot easement from the adjoining property without utilizing, except for where they go around the oak trees, the 25 foot easement on their property. Is that, would that be a true statement?
So yes.
Member Hume, this is Darren Wilson, Development Services Director. So the, the red is currently on the applicant's property today. And then just west of that is another 25 feet. So by, by going around the oak trees, it doesn't preclude the people, the parcel owner from the west utilizing the easement in the red. However, if they go to parcelize, we would probably have them protect the trees as well and utilize, you know, their 25 foot easement with a pop out, much like this applicant has.
So then from what I'm understanding, you saying Darren is that that, what's shown in red is the 25 foot on the applicant's parcel?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, so my second question then is with respect to the tree removals for that deceleration lane, what type of tree looked like it was an eucalyptus tree was the primary tree that would have to be removed?
Yes, the, the main one that's closest to the driveway that is a eucalyptus. There's, there's two oak trees that are just further to the east of that. Those are probably just over the size that they, they would be protected trees. There are probably eight or 10 inch trees. There's two of those just to the west or to the east of that eucalyptus.
Okay. And then with respect to drainage, I appreciate citing the code section that, you know, basically you cannot have your drain, water drain off of your property onto somebody else's property. Is there any sort of improvement plans as far as how drainage for this overall project? Cause I assume parcel four still drains out to Bond Road? Or would it drain to what I see is the ditch at the rear of the property? At the north end of the property?
It's hard for me to see. This is Darren Wilson, Development Services Director. I'm trying to zoom in on the contours on which way it drains. But to answer your question, these are more likely to be custom home permits, which are reviewed through the building department and reviewed against draining and drainage and erosion control.
And, and so essentially then at that point, they're going to have to prove that they contain their own drainage to whatever conveyance mode is nearest to them for their shed.
That's correct. And as long as they do not impede drainage where it floods the other property and they keep existing, say, say they're not developing the entire parcel, they're just developing a pad. So long as they don't interrupt drainage patterns that, that burden the adjacent property owner, then they would be fine.
Okay. And then, so my last question is that relates to the concerns of the neighbors has to do with the fencing. Is the reason that requiring improved or new fencing to be put in, is that because this is an agricultural use next to, or I mean a residential use next to agricultural residential use?
No, that's, there's no fencing requirement in that situation. The applicant was actually willing to provide repairs to those fences as kind of a neighborly gesture, but there's no requirement in code to do that because there's agricultural uses next to residential uses.
I, I believe the, the neighbor to the west was concerned that during the construction, it would interrupt or destroy their fencing and they have a horse farm operation. And, you know, they, they wanted the, the neighbor to the west wanted to add a condition that they place a fence on that property line.
Well, well, so I think there's two concerns. But, but that concern is a legitimate one because any disruption to containment of their livestock, we're not talking about just regular livestock which has a value of its own. These are competition horses that can be tens of thousands of dollars. If you break a fence and the horse gets out and gets hit, that's aside from obviously the loss of that animal. It's, it's, you know, potentially pretty good liability.
Yes. And maybe we, we can hear from, from the applicant on that. But I know before we went to planning commission, they, they were willing to accept the condition to, to repair any damaged fencing.
Okay.
But like I said, commission opted not to place that on there after hearing from both staff and, and the applicant. They discussed that and felt it wasn't, wasn't necessary at the time.
Well, and I think there are probably two, sort of two thresholds, if you will. You know, the one of, of how do they treat the fencing during construction? And then whether or not they're required to install new fencing at the, at the end on a go-forward basis. And then my, my last question is with respect to the map itself. I'm looking at the, the parcel line between the remainder parcel and parcel number three. And frankly, it looks like a jigsaw puzzle. I just see that presenting a great headache for future homeowners and, and potentially disputes that are going to cause a problem. Is there not any sort of variance or, or exception that we can grant with respect to either the ultimate created parcel size and/or the setbacks of the existing dwelling that would straighten that line out a bit?
So I, I think that's basically what the applicant proposed. I see your concern. Maybe the applicant can speak on that. But I don't think what's, Antonio, what's the size of parcel three? I can't see that.
Parcel three is two acres. So I, I think what you run into is you'd run into trying in adjusting that property line, you'd be trying to keep all parcels above that two acres. And you might run into difficulty with that. But I, I, that's something maybe.
They were carving a parcel out for the existing residents, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'll save that discussion for, for later. I mean, I think what they're, what it looks like is it's trying to, you know, have your cake and eat it too, of preserving as much of the existing landscaping, et cetera, for the existing parcel that just creates a bizarre new parcel shape. But those are all my comments for now. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing that there are none, I want to go ahead and declare the public hearing open. And I'd like to invite the applicant to speak. Is the applicant here?
And Mr. Mayor, I'll just check in with city staff to see if we have the applicant LinkedIn.
I do. I have the applicant on the line. Go ahead.
Hello, this is Javet Siddiqui, engineer for the project. The, the shape of remainder parcel was determined by the location of the building and, and providing the required setbacks to keep the improvements within that parcel. So we were able to maintain the area that is required to be met, keeping two acre minimum. And that was the rationale for the shape of that parcel. The two acre parcel is plenty big, so we should not create problems for a new property owner to build the building and meet all the setbacks. Can you hear me?
You're coming through loud and clear. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. The other question regarding the fence, the road is not going to be right on the property line. We have a 25 foot easement and the paved portion of the road is 20 feet. So, you know, we can, we can maintain some separation to not, to not create any damage to the fence between the two property lines.
Okay. Hi, Mr. Siddiqui. This is Councilmember Hume. I was the one asking the questions. So I guess my, my concern isn't necessarily with the, the utility of the size or the shape of the, the parcel number three. It's, it has more to do, and I'm sure you can relate to this. You know, when it comes time to put in a fence or do some improvements or even plant landscaping, and you go to look for the, the little metal markers that are in the ground that signify property line, the, the more out of a linear direction those markers are, the harder it becomes to determine. And so I'm just, I, I appreciate your, your point, I think, which was much more utilitarian aspect. But I'm, I'm looking to staff to answer whether or not there could be a variance either on the lot size or on the setbacks that would somehow straighten out that jog a little bit where it, it makes a 90 degree bend and then it makes another 90 degree bend and then it makes another 90 degree bend. You know, there's a, there seems to be a, a section of the property line that runs parallel with the shape of the house. It would seem like there would be a way to take that line on the, the bias and, and have more of a direct point to point between those markers.
Understood. We, we will, as part of the parcel map, we would be setting permanent markers at each angle point. So, you know, they, they could sense it before selling the lot. They could put a permanent fence along.
Okay, Mr. Advocate, is there anything else?
The only other comment I'd like to make is condition number 27, which added the deceleration lane taper. We'd like to, to see if that could be amended to just widen the driveway that is kind of common in the neighborhood for other properties, rather than this property only have that paper, which is going to create additional costs and also result in removing these trees that are there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, I want to open for a public comment. Mr. Clerk, is there any members of the public that signed up to speak on this item?
I'm checking all my comms and I have no additional items signed up to speak. I think as noted by staff, there was the letter that was received prior and circulated to the council. And I think staff was addressing the questions within that letter, but I have no other items in my inbox.
Okay. So I want to officially open and close public comment. And Mr. Advocate, is there anything additional to add? Mr. Siddiqui, are you still there?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that you'd like to add?
I, you know, I can answer any questions, but I was just requesting to amend that condition number 27.
Okay. All right. Since there's nothing additional, thank you very much. Want to declare the public hearing closed. Council deliberation and direction. Members?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll, I'll lead off here just to kind of close the loop on some of the issues that I raised. I, I think if we are not going to impose condition 27 to require the turn pocket, which to the applicant's point, I appreciate what he's saying, but given that this is an, an access easement that will also eventually serve the interior portion of the lot to the west, there's the, the likelihood that at some point in the future, more than just what is being proposed right now, will take access off of Bond Road at that point. So it might be prudent if we don't impose the, the full condition to, to at least go ahead and take the, the right of way dedication at this point. And then the only other thing that I, I think I feel good with respect to the other items, but I would just like to get my colleague's temperature with respect to straightening out that property line and, and staff's opinion on how we could make that happen, either with a variance or with some other exception to the, the lot area that would just not make it such a headache to determine that property line in the future.
Okay, members? Anyone else?
Mayor, it's Councilmember Soon. I'd support Councilmember Hume in, in having staff go through that endeavor. I, I would however, want to make sure that, I, I agree. I think one day they will need that decel lane. So if, if the, if I heard you right, the compromise is just take the right away for now. I'd be okay with that, but I would want to ensure that it was possible to construct a decel lane in the future.
Okay. Thank you, councilman. Anyone else?
Vice Mayor, yeah, I'd, I'd support Councilman Hume's recommendations. The only question would be is if, if we're only doing the dedication now on the right-hand turnpike, who does the improvements in the future?
So.
That's a question.
Yeah. So Darren Wilson, Development Services Director. So the way the rural area works through the code is we create, collect an in-lu fee per linear footage, if recall. And that in-lu fee is used to do those improvements.
Perfect. I support it.
All right. Excellent. Councilmember.
Yep. I support Councilmember Hume's recommendation.
All right. I have no issues, no questions and no comments on this. I'm fine with it. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, councilmembers, this is John Homs. If I can chime in for a minute, I want to make sure that I understand what the recommendation is. There's a map presented that has a line which, to use a sort of a general term, it has a bit of a crooked line. If that line cannot be straightened out through a variance which may not work or some other mechanism, what is the well of the what is the well of the council with respect to the, to the line as it stands? Do you, do you find that to be acceptable or would you like to come back or what would you like to do?
I have full faith in, in the expert minds of our staff and the applicant's engineers that they can find an amicable solution.
Okay, thank you.
And so with that, I will move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance finding no further environmental review is required pursuant to state sequel guidelines, sections, and approving a rezone for the 1049 Bond Road Project Planning 19-032, assessment of parcel number 127-0070-035 and 127-0070-036 as, as where I would need to put in the amendments, that's would be in the next motion, correct?
Send Mr. Hobbs, Mr. Hobbs?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, I'm sorry, thank you.
All right, we got a, got a motion, I hear a second from Councilmember Sun, so roll call vote?
For the roll call vote on the ordinance of motion one, Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Suon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And I'll entertain a motion for number two.
So then I would also make a motion to adopt the resolution with respect to the environmental review and approving the tentative parcel map subject to the amendments to the conditions and the lot line as discussed this evening.
Second.
Motion second and roll call vote.
For that roll call vote, Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Suon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Right, let's move to the next item.
And that next item will be 9.2, which is actually two public hearings to consider A, the 58th Annexation to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 for Maintenance Services, and B, the 32nd Annexation to Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Renee Atar, a finance analyst for the city. I'm here this evening with the presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. The city maintains eight special tax districts. The requirements are specific for each project and vary according to the geographic location and building use for the project. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a project's approval process. These taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. Tonight, there is one project that is being proposed for annexation into the following two districts. The first is CFD 2006-1 for Maintenance Services throughout the city, such as for parkways, parks, open space, pathways, pedestrian, pedestrian bridges and such. The second is for Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2 for Stormwater Drainage and Runoff Maintenance. Both assessments will be levied in perpetuity. More specifically about the, the project, this project proposed for annexation consists of two acres located northwest of Laguna Boulevard and Big Horn Boulevard. It is for a new Farmers and Merchants Bank. This concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions, thank you.
Okay, any questions? I don't hear any questions. So let's go ahead and declare the public hearing open for CFD 2006-1. And want to open for a public comment, Mr. Clerk, is there anyone to sign up to speak?
There are sign up to speak and checking my systems, they are, don't have anyone to speak.
Okay, then I want to close public comment and declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 closed. I'll entertain motion A1.
Motion A1.
There's a second. And roll call vote, please.
For the roll call vote on motion A1, Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Suon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Awesome, I'd like to request the result of the ballot tabulation.
Of two possible votes, two affirmative votes were cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Okay, motion A2.
Motion A2.
Second.
There's a second. All right, roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote on motion A2, Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Suon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Item passes 5-0.
All right, motion A3.
Motion A3, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only ordinance living and apportioning special tax and territory annex to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 Maintenance Services Annexation 58, pending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.19.010.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
That is motion second, roll call vote, please.
A roll call vote on motion A-3, Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Suon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Item passes 5-0.
All right, let me see, did I get ahead of myself?
I think you're good, we're into the second public hearing.
All right. Okay, SWDF Annex 32, want to declare public hearing open. And are there any members of public signed up to speak?
I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this island, I, I don't matter.
Okay, let's go ahead and close public comments and declare public hearing for SWDF Annex 13 closed.
Move motion B.
Before we get going to
Tabulation, please.
I'll give that tabulation, there is no majority protest of two possible votes weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property. Two affirmative votes were returned. Ballot approves the proposed assessment, the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. Resolution determining to levy assessments in the districts available for council consideration, and I did hear that Councilmember Hume moved that motion on motion
Second.
Motion second and roll call vote.
On motion B, that roll call vote, Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Suon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
All right, then let's move to the next item.
I'll take us on to item 9.3 of public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving amendments to the Community Development Block Grant Citizen Participation Plan, the 2013-18 Consolidated Plan and the 2019-20 Action Plan.
Great, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Sarah Bontrager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. I have two back-to-back CDBG presentations for you tonight. We are doing them separately because the first one is our special allocation of our COVID-19 CDBG funds and it has a shorter public comment period than our, than our annual plan. So tonight we will be asking you to adopt the amendments to a few documents related to our CDBG program. As you remember, our CDBG funding is provided annually through the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. We have several plans, a Citizen Participation Plan, a Consolidated Plan and an Annual Action Plan that implement that. And we had the new allocation of CARES Act funding that ultimately will lead to the city receiving $543,000 in CDBG CV funding. That requires us to amend some of our plans so that we can formally accept that new funding. So we have, we had to amend our Citizen Participation Plan because we have some flexibilities that we can take advantage of. Our original plan obviously didn't contemplate a global pandemic and a lot of public review locations being closed or the need to do a shorter than 30-day public review period. And so the changes that we made to our Citizen Participation Plan allow documents to be made available only electronically as necessary and to hold virtual public hearings and have a shorter public review period, which HUD has approved. So we are also amending our consolidated plan to add a couple of activities, maintaining or increasing public services targeted to low-income households and preventing and addressing homelessness. Our action plan is our annual budget document. The amendment identifies how we plan to spend the CDBG CV funding. Previously, on April 8, the council had identified about $192,000 in expenditures of those funds and that is moving forward and being implemented. This is kind of the formalization of that process. But we also have to allocate the rest of the funding. And so I've identified here our funding recommendations. The first, the first several are ones that you can see that we have allocated prior at the April 8 council meeting, so I won't go into great detail on those. But I will cover a couple of our new activities that we're proposing to fund. The first of which are Great Plates, is our Great Plates Delivered Program, which the city manager provided an update on earlier. We do have a local match requirement associated with that of about 6.25%. The state and FEMA are still working out whether we can use CDBG CV funding for that match, but we wanted to go ahead and allocate that in the event that that is possible to use that for match. Another new program that I'm really pleased that we've been able to work with our police department and our homeless navigator on is an encampment cleanup incentive program. So providing small incentives to people experiencing homelessness, living in encampments in our community, which will ultimately reduce the burden of our Public Works Department to go out and perform cleanups and also improve safety at a time when, you know, it's hard, it's hard to social distance and, you know, maintain sanitation. So this program will help to improve that. We have set aside about $110,000 in what we're calling a Public Services Supplemental Fund. We've worked with a lot of our nonprofits, the Food Bank, Heart, Meals on Wheels and others on what their short-term needs are. And we're still kind of waiting to see how things go over the next month or so. But we wanted to have some funding there to look at long-term needs. And so we've set aside about $110,000 to look at those long-term needs. We have also recommended allocating some additional funding to our rental and utility assistance program, expecting that there will be a lot of people who need that rent and utility assistance as the eviction moratoriums start to expire. Okay, and then we are, we are hoping to allocate some additional funding to the Renters' Helpline, which is receiving a lot of calls from people who are concerned about maintaining their housing, paying their rent, a lot of calls on the eviction moratoriums. So we have partnered with a few other jurisdictions to help them add a staff person to help address those questions. And then finally, we do typically allocate some funding for administration of our grants. The maximum allowed is 20% and fortunately, we've always been able to administer our grants for, for under 20% and allocate more money elsewhere. And so this represents a, a smaller amount. So our next steps are to submit the amended plans to HUD and then to also continue to work with our nonprofits to identify their long-term needs and allocate that Public Services Supplemental Fund. So that's it for the CDBG CV, I'm happy to answer any questions on that one.
Are there any questions? I don't hear any questions. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, at this point, I want to declare the public hearing open and want to open for a public comment. Mr. Clerk, are there any members of public submitted public comment or signed up to speak?
Indeed. What I have received is, I was not able to circulate this prior to the meeting, it was received as we got close to the meeting. It is from Ms. Connie Arnold and it is a letter that she submitted referencing item 93 and 94, but I can get underway here and read her comments into the record. Just give me just one moment as I pull those up.
Okay.
And here we go. "Seniors and persons with disabilities encompass populations hardest hit by the coronavirus pandemic, including those in congregate settings like nursing homes, assisted living facilities and group homes. Targeted funding to aid in the prevention of the disease spread is critical, as is helping to ensure seniors and persons with disabilities can remain living independent in their own homes and outside of institutions is critical to the goal of preventing current or new emergent disease spread. Home isolation and difficulty in obtaining food is another need for funding. The economy has caused others to be displaced from jobs has impacted the incidence of homelessness. Finding ways to keep people employed and safe with an income floor is critical. For those who cannot work and are homeless, it is important to ensure a safe residential setting and access to food supports." Keeping families, and that looked kind of like a hanging element there. "As a resident in Elk Grove since May 2000, as a person with a significant disability, I wish to comment on this and related CDBG funding priorities as follows. Increase the funding for minor home repair program must be increased significantly and increase the cap of $10,000, which is too low to provide persons with disabilities access to funding who need ceiling lifts, which can be in the cost range of $20,000 to $30,000. Custom roll-in showers to meet disability needs, widening of residential doors and installation of automatic door openers. Senior programs need to be made available via Zoom video conferencing and activities for seniors should be provided free or fees need to be reduced for those with low incomes. Increase curb ramp funding to retrofit accessible curb ramps done incorrectly or install missing curb ramp and for installation of low and reachable pedestrian crosswalk buttons is critical. Increase support for Meals on Wheels and Great Plates Program. Ensure persons with disabilities and seniors with very, very low incomes have access to needed apartments with rent subsidies. Discontinue funding to Sacramento Habitat for Humanity operating Elk Grove Minor Home Repair Program. I wish to speak to members of the city council about this discrimination I experienced this year in trying to access the Minor Home Repair Program through the Sacramento Habitat for Humanity in February 2020 and their complete lack of disabled access at their facilities. I wish to add more to this list of priorities at a future date. She provided a number in order to contact, which will be circulated around the council and staff to discuss those matters further. Sincerely, Connie Arnold." And that is the one item that I've received on item 9.3. And as I noted, Connie Arnold also said that this was in relation to item 9.4 as well.
Okay, excellent. That being the case, we'll go ahead and close public comments and declare our public hearing closed. Council deliberation and direction, members? Comments, questions? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, motion.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion second and roll call vote.
For the roll call vote on the motion for item 9.3, pardon my timer there. Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Suon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Item passes 5-0.
All right, let's move to the next item.
That'll take us to item 9.4. Whoops. Sorry, my systems decided to take a little nap there. Public hearing to consider the 2020-2021 Community Development Block Grant and Community Service Grant funding recommendations and provide direction on 2025, 2020 to 2025 CDBG priorities.
All right, this is the second of our CDBG items and also our Community Service Grant item. I am again Sarah Bontrager, Housing and Public Services Manager. So just to go into, I've covered a little bit of the basics on CDBG in the previous presentation. We do have the requirement that activities need to benefit primarily low-income persons and meet priorities identified in our five-year consolidated plan, which we are updating this year. With our Community Service Grant, this is our general fund grant and so it is a little bit more flexible in terms of what it can, what it can fund. We do have a separate event sponsorships grant, so we don't use the CSG funds for that. You'll be discussing that in the next item, which I will not be presenting. So the, the consolidated plan is our five-year plan. We look at setting forth some goals and strategies as to how we're going to spend funds over that five years. And then the action plan is a component of that that we do each year, that's our annual budget. So we did a lot of outreach this year, fortunately, most of it completed before we got the stay-at-home order. We did a nonprofit service We did a nonprofit survey, a resident survey. We went out and we talked to folks at the Food Bank and at the Elk Grove United Methodist Church on meals on weekends and at some of our affordable apartment complexes. And so through community outreach, we identified a few high priority needs. Affordable housing came up time and time again, as well as housing for people experiencing homelessness and services for that same population. Commonly mentioned was accessibility improvements, curb ramps, and that sort of thing. We saw a lot of requests for improved transit service, particularly service on weekends. And then we, in terms of programs for homeowners, both homebuyer assistance and rehabilitation programs for homeowners. And then, of course, we heard a lot from, from folks on what services are needed, serving people who are older adults, people with mental illness, veterans, foster youth, youth in general, persons with disabilities, and survivors of domestic violence and abuse were the highest priorities identified. And we wanted to share that with you. We will be releasing the very long consolidated plan document for public review, and so before we go ahead and do that, we're interested in collecting any information from the council tonight on what you see as the highest priority needs in the community. Moving on to our 2021 funding, we have an annual entitlement allocation of about $924,000. We are also looking at reallocating about $286,000 in unspent prior year funds from projects that either didn't move forward or didn't spend all of their funding, and about $12,000 in program income, which typically comes from loan repayments on our minor home repair program. For our CSG allocation, we're looking at about $373,000. That is a decrease from last fiscal year because we're expecting to see our revenues decrease. And so we, we had the CSG amount decline in proportion. But very fortunately, part of the CARES Act included a provision that waived the statutory public services cap on CDBG funding, not only for the CDBGCV allocation, but also for our FY 2021 allocation. And so we could, in theory, spend all of it on public services, whereas we're typically limited to 15%. So you'll see, as we went through our recommendations, that we did exceed that 15%, and we did try and use the opportunity to, where we could, fill out eligible organizations' grant requests with CDBG funds, noting that we can't use them to supplant recent local government funding. So if an organization had this fiscal year received CSG funding, they needed to receive that same amount next year before we can add CDBG funding to their, to their award. So we ran our typical process, the joint application process for CDBG and CSG funding. We advertised it, as we always do on the website and in the citizen, and sent notices to our pretty extensive list of interested nonprofits. We did hold two technical assistance workshops on February 4th, one of them during the day and one of them in the evening. And I believe it was the afternoon one that was recorded, and that was made available on the website for nonprofits who weren't able to make it to either. And the applications were due February 21st. We received 36 applications from nonprofits and city departments for a wide variety of activities. Over $2.5 million was requested. As we reviewed those, we looked at how they would impact the community and high-need populations, whether they were implementable in the time period that we have, which is a one-year time period. We looked at the budgets and the administrative capacity of the agency and whether they had any leveraged funds. We did re-review our recommendations. We had an original set of them, and then we had the pandemic, and so we did re-review them in light of that and made, made some adjustments to accommodate the new circumstances. So we have, we have some capital project recommendations, as we usually do. We are recommending about $36,000 for Chicks in Crisis so that they can connect their, their site to public sewer. Currently, they have a septic system which they are not allowed to replace, and they are looking to, and they're, they, so they need a bathroom facility and need to connect to the public sewer. We also are proposing to go back to administering our own minor home repair program. We had previously had a cooperative partnership with Habitat for Humanity, and they, they weren't as successful administering that program as they had hoped, and so they decided to discontinue it. So we're hoping to go back to doing what we were doing before. And then to do some curb ramp improvements projects with our Public Works Department at about $665,000. So our recommendations for CDBG funding, those that have an asterisk here indicates that they are also receiving some amount of CSG funding. The spreadsheet that you have in your staff report goes through how much of each. We didn't spell that out here, but this is the total that we're proposing for the organization. So I will just quickly run through these. Most of them are returning organizations. We've worked with 916, Inc., and Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and the Food Bank, and Heart. Basically, everybody on this page for many years. The Rental and Utility Assistance Program is the, is a new program, and this funding would be paired with the CDBGCV funding. We think that there's going to be a lot of demand for that type of assistance going into June, July, August, as we're still seeing lower, lower-than-average employment rates and people struggling to pay back rent owed. And again, these, these organizations, Self-Help Housing, Uplift, we have worked with for a long time. As for the CSG recommendations, again, you'll see a lot of familiar organizations here. We do have a new application from the Elk Grove Fine Arts Center to help them with just their basic organizational support, helping them to fund their location, their larger location in Elk Grove. And let's see, I think that's the only new one there. Yeah, and so, so we've got a lot of, a good standing list of organizations that we funded over the years, and roughly the same amounts or a little bit more where we could allocate it to those organizations. We have a couple of recommendations that aren't funded by CDBG or CSG but are funded outside of that, but that we run through this process. One of them is our Navigator, and the other one is Sacramento Splash's Stormwater Education Program. They had previously been funded by us and then taken a couple of years' break. Under new leadership, they've come back, and we think that there's an opportunity for a successful partnership there, using the Stormwater Utility Fee, the Drainage Fund for that, which Public Works is on board with. So our next steps after tonight and any feedback that you want to give us on the allocation amounts or the priorities are to release our public review draft of the consolidated plan and action plan. The public comment period will run May 22nd to June 24th, and then we'll ask the council to approve the CDBG allocations on June 24th. The CSG allocations have typically been adopted as a part of the budget. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Councilmember?
Okay, Ms. Sarah, I, I wanted to know, and you might have said this, but I was looking through the list, what happens with what we're going through right now? Some of these organizations are nonessential, and if things don't open back up again and we've committed to funding, funding them for their program, project, or whatnot, what, what's going to happen with that funding? Does that?
Yeah, so, so we are working with a lot of the organizations. We've actually been really impressed with people's ability to pivot and to provide their services in different ways. For example, 916, Inc. has moved from an in-classroom system to doing more, more online. And that's the same, for example, with Run and For Ret, which is also a school-based activity. And so we, we want to remain committed to supporting the nonprofits and helping them to look at different service models, but recognizing that, you know, some may not spend all their funding. And so if it's a, if it's CSG funding, then that fund would just go back into the general fund, or we could look at using it for other nonprofits. If it's CDBG funding, then depending on the amount, then we could administratively reallocate it to other activities that are going forward and may need additional budget. Or if it's a high amount, then we would come back to the council and ask you to allocate it to a different project.
So I'll give an example. The first one, Mong International Culture Institute, and it's talking about providing weekly Mong language, arts, culture, things like that. And then also, like you've mentioned Splash, that looks like it's going to be some educational, and it's in school. So have they pitched that they will be moving online and doing things virtually instead?
Well, Splash has already moved a large amount of content online. I've actually watched some of it with my own kids. So they have really worked hard to put up a lot of content online. I think at this point, both Splash and the Mong International Cultural Institute are organizations that run on the academic year. Sacramento Splash tends to do their work in the spring because it culminates with the field trip to the vernal pools after the rainy season. And so I think both organizations are kind of anticipating that they'll be able to offer some classroom services at their, at their usual times, but could pivot to doing some more online content in the event that, that is not allowed.
Okay, and then how do we ensure that if they're moving things online, how do we ensure that participants have access to internet and also a device, whether it's a tablet or a laptop, to be able to take advantage of some of these programs?
Yeah, so for, for, for the, those that partner with the school district, we've largely been relying on the school district to coordinate that. But digital access is, is an important issue that, that still deserves some consideration. I think that if we were finding that students could not participate in activities due to lack of internet access or, or lack of technology, one option we might have would be to look at using, either allowing the organization to use some of their budget to purchase technology that could be loaned, or we could also look at using our CDBGCV Public Services Supplemental Fund in the event that the beneficiaries were low-income.
When, when was this, these proposals due again? Was it?
February 21st.
Okay, so it was, it was before this whole thing hit, and that's why that wasn't a question. Okay, thank you, Ms. Sarah. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, any other questions? All right, hearing that there are no additional questions, let's go ahead and move on. I want to declare public hearing open. Want to open for a public comment. Mr. Clerk, is there anyone who has signed up to speak or submitted any comments?
We do have a series of items. So what was received were nine written comments that were circulated to the full council and staff prior to the meeting. In addition to that, I believe I have five pre-recorded comments, and I have four submitted comments that came in, it's by the time the meeting had started. If it's amenable to the council, what I'd suggest is I read one and then give my vocal cords a break while I pull up one of the audio ones and kind of switch back and forth between the two.
All right, Jason.
All right. So I'll start off with one of the written comments, and then we'll go from there. Just give me a little bit of patience as I kind of oscillate between my two different And our first written comment is coming, and pardon me for any of my pronunciation on names, I'll do my best with, and see how we proceed from there. But this first written comment is coming from Yang Zhong. "I am an Elk Grove resident of more than 10 years. I am writing in support of city staff's recommendation of funding $5,000 of the CSG allocations to the Mong International Culture Institute, HICI. In the current fiscal year, my children had the opportunity to attend HICI's Mong Chuchu School before the stay-at-home policies. Although they are of Mong descent, they could not read and write in Mong and lack knowledge about their own culture, history, and of their parents and grandparents' contributions and sacrifices for the United States. However, because of HICI's Mong school, my children are now more knowledgeable about their history, language, and culture, and how they fit into the broader mainstream community. Now, my children are of Mong descent, yet they had very little information about their own identity. How much more does our other Elk Grove children who are non-Mong know about the Mong community? I would say very little to nothing. As I understand, the city of Elk Grove prides itself on promoting tolerance and to its rich cultural diversity, HICI's program is helping to fill any missing gaps and support the city of Elk Grove towards that end. Although HICI needs more than $5,000, I am grateful and accept this recommendation. I urge the city council to support this recommendation. Thank you, Yang Zhong." And I'm going to do a little bit of a transition and see if I can pull this off to go to an And that first audio comment is coming from Mackenzie Weiser.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Mackenzie Weiser. I'm giving you a call as a representative from Sacramento Splash. As the CEO, we are very pleased, humbled, and honored to be a part of the Community Service Block Grant Program, and we greatly appreciate your support of the staff's recommendations before you tonight. Thank you so much, and Sacramento Splash is excited to bring 22 or more classes out to Mather and be, to be a part of our investigating vernal pools field trips for the next fiscal year. Thank you so much for your support, and please be well.
All right, and just making sure that everyone can hear me as I kind of bounce back and forth from mouse to mouse here. I will carry on. My next written comment is from Mysi Zhang. "My name is Mysi Zhang, and I'm the Board President of HICI. I am also writing on behalf of Wang Xingtao, the founder and executive director of HICI. We have applied for the CSG grant this year again. We understand the city staff has recommended funding our program $5,000 for the new fiscal year. Our program is very grateful for this recommendation, and we are writing to you, the council members, to ask for your support of this recommendation. The mission of HICI is to preserve, strengthen, and share Mong history, culture, language, cultural arts, and traditions through education and promote cross-cultural understanding in our diverse communities. We provide a unique program in the city of Elk Grove on most Saturday mornings from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. during the academic school year to students in grades 1 through 12. Currently, there is no similar program in the city of Elk Grove to provide such services as it relates to teaching the Mong culture, traditional arts, history, and folk music to our Elk Grove children. All of our children are exposed to diversity more and more, in both good ways and bad. Lately, we've seen during this pandemic that there's been an increased discrimination and hatred towards Asians. Mong are Asians. There's no better time than now to continue educating our Elk Grove children about tolerance, understanding, and diversity. HICI happens to be focused on the Mong, but similar programs are needed in all of the diverse communities in Elk Grove. HICI could be the starting point. We need to be proactive about putting in place resources and programs to promote more awareness of the rich diversity in Elk Grove. HICI is filling that gap. Again, please support the city staff recommendation of $5,000 for HICI. Thank you for your consideration and support. Sincerely, Mysi Zhang, President of HICI, and Wang Xingtao, Executive Director of HICI." And now a transition back over to phone comments.
Hi, this is Patsey Hopkins, and I'm calling to comment on item 9.4 of tonight's city council agenda, and it deals with the Community Development Block Grant monies to be distributed in 2020 through 21. I'm speaking on behalf of Uplift People of Elk Grove. Uplift People of Elk Grove is a natural next step to the homeless and underemployed individuals and families in the Elk Grove area. Organizations such as Elk Grove Food Bank Services, Heart, and Wynn provide food and shelter. Uplift provides a supporting community that walks with our champions as they learn how to network with available organizations and knowledgeable individuals to go beyond living paycheck to paycheck. They learn new skills, set and meet realistic goals, and They learn new skills, set and meet realistic goals, and learn the importance of giving back. The team of mentors that walk, that help them walk these roads to more abundant lives gain through these experiences as well. We continue working virtually with our participants during the COVID-19 pandemic. We communicate regularly to support them, encourage them, and help them shift their goals and meet their needs in response to the new challenges. Please consider keeping the request for the Uplift People of Elk Grove. Thank you."
And we're going to move back to the city clerk reading an item N. Changing gears to Teen Center USA. And this is a written message from Goldene Tameo Smith. "I want to express my heartfelt thanks to the city of Elk Grove for recommending Teen Center USA to receive funding from the CSG for 2020 and 2021. This year marks 30 years of Elk Grove Teen Center, 10 years as Teen Center USA, being in existence in the Elk Grove community. We've served, served hundreds of teens year to year by providing a consistent place for them to go after school and during the summertime. But more than just providing a physical space, our programs are the vehicle to provide consistent, positive relationships that would help to inspire our teens to know and understand their worth and potential. I've served at the Teen Center in various roles for over eight years, and I have seen from year to year how impactful the Teen Center has been in the lives of so many of our kids. I experienced this most recently on Mother's Day weekend as handfuls of teens sent me messages, texts, and a surprise visit at me, at my home from a few of our teens wishing me a Happy Mother's Day. It's humbling to know that I'm regarded as a mom figure in their lives. I know that our staff each have had similar experiences being considered family members as well, and we are happy that we can serve them in this way. As the COVID-19 pandemic continues to keep our physical drop-in center closed, we've spent time innovating and creating ways to stay connected and keep building the relationships we have with our teens through our virtual Teen Center using Discord server app. We also have continued to connect and offer live-streamed life skills workshops through our social media channels and Zoom calls. We appreciate your time and thought into considering the funding for the Teen Center, as well as the other nonprofits who serve our Elk Grove community. Please extend our gratitude to Sarah and Alicia, especially for their hard work in helping us as well as other nonprofits navigate through such an uncertain and difficult time. From Goldene Tameo Smith and Teen Center USA, Executive Director." And switching hats again, giving myself a little bit of a break here and trying this out, another phone comment.
Yeah, hi, my name is Nora Legg, and I'm calling on behalf of the Uplift People of Elk Grove, which is to support them, which is 9.4 in support of Uplift. I just want to say that I feel that Uplift is very important to the community. They have, have been involved with them for the last year almost, and it is exactly that, they're uplift. They have helped me, I'm in transitional living, and they have really supported me. And I think it's really good for the community and for the people involved. Thank you.
And the last of the written comments I have is from Camden Bordelon, again regarding the Elk Grove Teen Center. "Before and when I started coming to the Teen Center, I'd been through so much mentally and physically with my health, so I was extremely shy and introverted. I don't think I said more than a few sentences the first week I came. After a few days, I was asked by Scott if I wanted to come and play games, and my life changed in such a positive way from there. I met so many amazing people who created some of the best memories I've ever had. They've been there through thick and thin, familial issues, failed relationships, and cancer scares, to name a few, and helped me become stronger in the end. Thank you so much for all you've done, and thank you so much to all who've allowed this to happen with continued support. I'm so glad I broke out of my barrier and made the first step to come. Thanks, Camden Bordelon."
Yes, I'm calling for 9.4 on the agenda. My name's Crystal, and I'm calling for Uplift Elk Grove. And I would just like to say how much of a help they've been with our community in supporting our people in our program and giving them almost daily calls with support from a large amount of people financially helping with groceries and getting rides and counseling and just tremendous amount of help that I don't know where it would come from if it didn't come from them and how they do so much outreach. And I'm just really hoping that they'll be given the funding that they deserve, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. And any questions? 916-627-8960. Thank you very much. Crystal.
Hi, my name is Mark Jansen, and I'm calling regarding the city grants that is going to be reviewed tonight. It's possibly too late, but I feel that the request by Elk Grove Food Bank Services of $100,000 is not really enough. Predicated on the amount of service that they are doing for people who are in immediate food need in the Elk Grove area, I would recommend heartily that they be granted $110,000. That's my feeling, and I'd love to have it played tonight if that's appropriate. In addition, regarding the issue of whether or not Elk Grove should have a mayor, I am in full support of having a mayor and a city council and support that issue as well. Thank you.
Sounds like we got a preview for a future agenda item that's coming up. But that concludes the written comments and recorded comments on item 9.4.
Okay, is there anything else? Is that it?
I believe that's all the comments that have been submitted, and I've looked through my inbox, and it is clear on this item.
Okay, then let's go ahead and close public comment and declare the public hearing close. Counsel deliberation and direction. Members, any input?
I'd support staff's recommendation.
All right. Councilmember Sun, councilmember Wayne?
I, I said I'd support staff's recommendation.
Oh, okay, I gotcha. I meant councilmember Hugh.
I know it's, it's because we look alike. I got a question following up on what councilmember Wayne mentioned. With respect to running for RET, given that their entire program is for students at Elk Grove schools, and, you know, we're still in a kind of a state of uncertainty as to when schools will reopen, how are they redirecting that money? Do we know that, Sarah?
Um, you know, they, yeah, let's, let me pull up their. They had provided a little bit of information on that. Let me see if I can find that here real quickly. So, okay, it's, I'm looking at now, and I can maybe quote from it a little bit. So they, they did a, for this year, what they've done for the spring was a virtual run. And they also did some online classes and online training. And it looks like based on the comments that they submitted and the information that they submitted to us, that they are continuing to provide different fitness and movement opportunities for youth using both onsite and virtual sessions. Onsite being what they would do, you know, if schools allowed it. And it does, it does sound like at this point that students will be going back to school in some fashion. And fortunately for Run Infrared, running is something that you can do with some appropriate social distancing. So I would expect that they will be able to operate their, their programs in, in some fashion. But they, they have a fairly big organization and a lot of volunteers. And so I, I think they have the capacity to utilize technology effectively.
Okay.
Ms. Sarah, I have one more question. In looking at my sister's house and their request for rent for Lotus House, it looks like, was there? Was there a reason why? Is it because we just don't fund this, something like this? I only ask because with the way things are going now, I know domestic violence is on the rise. And I also know that our city has a good percentage of EPIs. And so having this service would be something that I would want to see. And I don't think we've funded anything else as it pertains to domestic violence on this list. And so I'm wondering if you can kind of enlighten me.
Yeah, yeah, we, we looked at that one pretty closely, and there were a couple of concerns that staff had about it. One is that they weren't able to commit that the house would serve people who lived in Elk Grove. They, they pull from, from their shelter, which serves the region. And so while the home is located somewhere in the city of Elk Grove, we don't know where. It's obviously confidential location. They weren't able to commit that they could prioritize Elk Grove residents. And currently, the percentage of residents at the house was, was mostly not Elk Grove residents or people who had been Elk Grove residents before exiting their, their previous living situation. And so we were worried about that a little bit. We also had some concerns about, the houses is focused on a specific ethnic group. And the CDBG regulations do not allow for discrimination based on that. I think that that is something that, you know, in, in our questioning, they, they indicated that they were willing to work with us on. But it is a little bit of a challenge in, in terms of their, their business model.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, sounds good. I support your recommendation, and let's move forward. All right, let's move to the next item.
Do you need a roll call?
Nope, there's no vote, it's just direction.
All right.
For this item, it is just direction. It will come back on, in end of June, I believe, for actual formal action on CDBG, and then the grants will come back through the budget process. With that, that will take us on to section 10 of our regular agenda action items, starting with item 10.1, which is receive information and provide direction regarding the allocation of fiscal year 2020, 2021 event sponsorship grant program funds.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. This is Jody Moreno, Community Events and Special Projects Coordinator for the city. And I'm here to share a presentation regarding the city's 2020, 2021 event sponsorship grant program. I have a short presentation. I'll be willing to answer any questions you may have regarding the program and funding recommendations that will be presented today. So some background on the program. It was started in 2012, and it's supported by the general fund to help support nonprofits looking to hold a special event in Elk Grove by standardizing a program that included an application process, eligibility process, and city support guidelines for events. And this program only focuses on special events that benefit eligible nonprofits. In the last fiscal year, the city supported 34 events by 24 organizations that were able to draw more than 200,000 guests to Elk Grove. And with that, 28% were coming from out of town. In our current fiscal year that ends June 30th, we were scheduled to support 39 events hosted by 27 different organizations. For our upcoming event sponsorship grant program that begins in July, we released the application in January and notified past grantees interested new nonprofits and others through advertisements in the Elk Grove Citizen, on the city's website, through our social media platforms, and through direct emails. And applications were accepted through an online process and were due February 28th. As you know, along with every other facet of our lives being affected by COVID-19, the event world has been put on hold, and our nonprofit partners have had to make adjustments to be in compliance with county and state guidelines surrounding large gatherings and events. In our current grant cycle, we've been working with several of our grantees to move, change, or postpone their current events and contracts, including the Chamber of Commerce, Elk Grove Regional Scholarship Foundation, and more that you can see listed here. Now, as mentioned, our deadline for applications was February 28th, which was just prior to the onset of the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic. And because of the impact this has had on event planners, we've already had five events for this next fiscal year canceled as they were not able to plan for their summer events with such uncertainty on when restrictions may lift. As we continue to receive new updates from the county and state, we're expecting that there could be a lot more cancellations or possible postponements. And we want you to know that we're also working with every grantee to communicate that the city would not be able to support any events that would be in violation of county guidelines. In looking at the funding requests for this upcoming grant cycle, we saw 35 eligible applications come through with funding requests that totaled over $500,000, which includes cash and in-kind support from police, public works, integrated waste, and facility use. We're sharing these totals with you today because this is in preparation for our budget review that becomes part of the approved overall city budget. Not knowing what the future may hold for events during COVID-19, we move forward with vetting each application for eligibility prior to that happening. And it was also reviewed by an internal panel that took into consideration things like event concept, feasibility, what was the regional attraction, and more, so we could actually earmark these funds for the program. And based on the internal review, I kind of wanted to go through slides kind of like Sarah had. These are the recommended funding allocations for your consideration that include both cash and in-kind amounts. These totals are also noted in the staff report as attachment one. I won't go through them all, and they are a lot of returning grantees, but I will note some of the newer events and some of the items that are of special note. As you can see here, one of our, our new grantees this year that had applied was the Camden Neighborhood Association for their annual Music by the Lake event, which takes place in August. Looking at our next slide here, the Holiday of Lights Parade will make their second year return at District 56, which was highlighting the lighting of our tree and culminating with an event and kicking off with the run. So we're really excited that that's going to be coming back for a second year. We are obviously going to offer continued support of the Fine Arts Center in their endeavors as they have also sent out a lot of letters of recommendation, which we very much appreciate. We are seeing the biannual return of the Cal Ripken Baseball Tournament that brings a 70% out-of-town visitor number to our city. So we very much are looking forward to them coming back this year. The Franklin High School Invitational Band Review is a wonderful event that represents Northern California circuit of competitions, and they draw a large regional audience as well. And we have another new grantee from the Seropimus International of Elk Grove for a new conference that would be coming to District 56. The total amount we're recommending for cash and in-kind contributions is $231,540. Again, this is, we're looking to earmark for the FY 2021 program, understanding that the total funding could be reduced even further depending on how long social distancing mandates remain in effect. Today, we're looking for your direction or approval on the recommended allocations, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? All right, hearing that there are no questions, let's go ahead and open.
I couldn't, I couldn't get my microphone unmuted.
Councilman.
Not a question, but I just want to comment as one who has worked with a couple of the nonprofits that have had to cancel or move events. I just want to extend my sincere gratitude to Jody and her staff for working with these folks. You know, I mean, every day is kind of a moving goalpost at this point. And so just to, to sort of be reassuring that the city is still there in support and still wants to see these things happen, and as soon as we're able, we will. It's just, it's a, it's a sense of normalcy in uncertain times, and so I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anyone else? No questions, no comments? Let's go ahead and open for public comment. Mr. Clerk, are there any public comments logged in?
Regarding public comments on item 10.1, we did receive eight written comments prior to the meeting that were circulated to the full council and staff. I did receive another comment that came in via email, and that's the one lone comment on this item, and I can move to reading that into the record.
Go ahead, please.
This email is from Sharon Anderson. "Regarding item 10.1 and the allocation of funding for event sponsorship, please know that the Camden Neighborhood Association fully supports going forward with the allocation proposed by staff. As many know, Camden's Music by the Lake event is one of the most popular free community events in the region. We understand that circumstances might change the date of our event, but at this point, we're hopeful we will go forward in August as proposed. This is how we celebrate summer." We are very grateful for any assistance since the CNA has shouldered the cost of this community event for over 10 years. Looking forward to celebrating for many years to come at our annual Music by the Lake Free Community Concert and Craft Fair and Food Trucks. With gratitude, Sharon Anderson, President of the Camden Neighborhood Association. And that was the one comment that I had. Checking my comms, uh I don't have anything else coming in on item 10.1.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Uh, that being the case, let's go ahead and close public comment to Council of Direction and Direction. Members?
I support staff's recommendation as presented.
All right. All right, sounds good. I support it as well. Councilmember Wayne?
Yes, sorry, I can unmute my button. Yes, supportive.
Case. All right, sounds good. Let's go ahead and move to the next item then.
And that next item will be item 10.2, which is to provide direction regarding Elk Grove's 2020 Salute to the Red, White, and Blue Event.
Yes, hello, me again, Jody Moreno, your Community Events and Special Projects Coordinator for the city of Elk Grove. And I'm here to share another presentation regarding the city's 2020 Salute to the Red, White, and Blue event tentatively scheduled for July 4th. Uh, some information on the event. As you know, in 2010, the city took over the production of Elk Grove Salute to the Red, White, and Blue to commemorate the 10th anniversary of the city's incorporation. And we've been producing a spectacular community event ever since. And in looking at the model we've typically used for Salute to Red, White, and Blue, we know this type of large gathering won't work. So for 2020, staff proposes an alternate to the production plan to prevent large gatherings and comply with the COVID-19 Public Health Order, while still offering the community an opportunity to celebrate Independence Day and the city's 20th anniversary of incorporation. This plan has been shared and vetted with Kasumnas Fire and other partners, and all feedback has included in our alternate plan. So what we're proposing is to still shoot off the fireworks, but unfortunately not hold the wonderful gathering we have in the blast. In its place, we're looking to partner with a local television station in hopes of broadcasting the show live, so every resident would have the opportunity to watch either from their neighborhood or from their living rooms. The show would be accompanied by a soundtrack from 93.7 The River, who was a returning media partner for us. We would plan to collaborate with our fireworks provider to use larger shells in the production, which in turn will yield better viewing opportunities for many residents to step outside to view the show or watch through a media partner broadcast. You know, staff is really excited to offer some optimism with this alternate plan. And while many other nearby jurisdictions, including Galt, Davis, and Folsom, have canceled their celebrations, we feel like this option allows us to celebrate while maintaining social distancing measures. And it's also going to allow us to share our celebration with other communities in the region who unfortunately have had to cancel theirs. This alternate plan reduces our July 4th event costs and allows Elk Grove PD to dedicate more of their patrols to enforcing the laws prohibiting illegal fireworks. It's also an exciting opportunity to showcase our city to a regional audience with a television and radio partnership that would include on-air commercials promoting our celebration. So today, we're looking for council's direction or approval of the proposed alternate plan or any alternatives you may want us to consider. And I am definitely happy to answer any questions on this concept.
All right, are there any questions?
No questions, but thank you. I'm excited um to um that we're still going to do something here in our city.
Thank you.
Any other members?
Yeah, I agree. You know, being able to continue celebrating our city's birthday as well as our national holiday, I think is something that's important to our community, especially under the situations we've been through for the last two months. All right, adds a little brightness and sunshine into our lives. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jody, I just want to commend you and Kristen for your innovation, working and put this together.
Thank you.
Very well said. Um, you know, thank for thinking outside the box and um for continuing this so that our spirits are restored. So, you know, especially this year being our 20th, um I think this is extremely important. So I'd gladly support.
Thank you.
All right, I think you have what you need, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Next item.
And that next item will take us to item 10.3, which is to consider ratifying and approving a plaque recognizing Elk Grove Laguna Forums for 10 years of service to the Elk Grove community. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. It's a brief staff report item. Uh, for this item, on March 9th, 2020, a plaque was presented to Robert Doc Souza of Elk Grove Laguna Forums, recognizing 10 years of service to the Elk Grove community. In the staff report, there's a depiction of that plaque. Um, at the meeting of April 22nd, Councilmember Wynn requested that the matter of the plaque be returned for the city council for ratification and approval by the council. And there is that option as it was, um, the plaque was designed with the four names of the council, whether to add the name of the mayor um onto the plaque. Um, but I'll set that up as the, that's the staff report behind the item. I will let you know that we've had a series of written comments that have come in on this item. I have uh 21 written comments um that have been received prior to the council meeting. We have a series of three folks that would wish to call in and discuss this matter. Um, and I also have some pre-recorded messages as well. I have uh, we'll do four of those to play. So just in terms of catching the um public comment interest on this item.
All right, uh, sounds good. Uh, at this point, I want to go ahead and open for public comment. And Mr. Clerk, if you want to figure out how best to handle it, uh, we'll leave it up to you.
I think what I'll start with is I'll touch base with the staff to see if we have one of our call-in uh individuals available.
Jason, did all the pre-recorded asked to be read into the record that were already sent to us?
Um, I I think a majority of them were.
Okay.
Jason, I have the first caller ready for you.
Excellent.
Go ahead, caller.
Hi there, um, I had a couple of comments regarding 10.3, which is related to the Laguna Forum Facebook group. And I just have some concerns um related to how the group presents itself. Um, when I first came across the group, it appeared to be something that was put on perhaps by the city. Um, but I, you know, I noticed after a couple of um posts and threads from the author or moderator that it was clearly one individual. Um, but I think because the name of the group is, you know, Elk Grove Laguna Forums, that it's misleading and that the government, uh, the the businesses that are um, you know, advertised on the page could also be misleading in looking like it's, that it is, you know, uh endorsed by the city. And some of the comments have also been, I would say, not a great reflection on um our community, whether or not I agree or disagree with, you know, um, the posters' comments. But I would, I would really hate for, you know, a page by one individual to represent all of Elk Grove. Um, it just, it just, I think, I mean, the best way to put it really is it's misleading. And I don't think that um it's a good representation of how diverse and open Elk Grove really is as a community. Um, and I guess that's all I have to say about that.
All right, thank you.
And I think what we're going to do is switch gears just a little bit and switch to one of the phone-in comments um to give us time in order to patch in to the uh, sorry, one of the pre-recorded comments, to give us time to make the connection with folks that wish to phone in. So just give me a moment here.
This is public comment for 10.3 from Constance Conley. Short and sweet. This is simply an after-the-fact agenda item to try and cover up a Brown Act violation. I guess you haven't gotten the memo that a lot of your constituents are very smart people.
And I think I can hear our staff connecting, so I'll continue with the next pre-recorded comment.
Hello, my name is Sarah Louie, and I was calling to offer comment on agenda item 10.3 for tonight's city council meeting. I apologize that I can't be available during the council meeting time as I have another commitment for work, but I felt it was very important that I speak out and was hoping that this recording could be played during the meeting. I wanted to speak a little bit about my concerns surrounding giving a plaque to Elk Grove Laguna Forums for their contributions to our community. As a lay leader at Elk Grove United Methodist Church, which has been part of our community for over 160 years, as well as a family physician here in town for the past four years, while I appreciate the service that this forum provides in helping people connect with local businesses, I have developed over the last few years many concerns about some of the content on the forum. Primarily, my concern centers around the forum's focus on one very narrow perspective of what it means to be Elk Grove. Having been part of my church's Committee on Diversity and Inclusion and now co-chairing that, I've had the opportunity to meet with members of your commission on diversity and inclusion. And I feel that the opinions, such as those against Black Lives Matter, as well as the exclusion of opinions from people of different races and the tone policing that occurs on Elk Grove Laguna Forums, is not consistent with our city's principles of diversity and inclusion. While I recognize that everyone's entitled to their Second Amendment rights and their opinions, I feel that giving a plaque to such a forum sends the wrong message to our city and to others who may see this. I think it's very important that we consider diverse perspectives in our city and that we are all having a seat at the table. I don't feel that Elk Grove Laguna Forums provides this. I thank you very much for your time and really appreciate your consideration of my opinion and your, and your deliberations. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me if any concerns. I will make sure to send my email and phone number to the county clerk. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
And I was going to touch base. I do believe we have a speaker queued up.
We do. One moment. Ms. Rodriguez, you may go ahead now.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jennifer Rodriguez, and I'm an Elk Grove resident of 17 years. I'm calling to voice my opposition to the city recognition for Elk Grove Laguna Forums and Doc Souza for service to the community. This page is not a forum, but a business run by one person. And Mr. Souza is a poor representation of our city. His page is full of racist comments. Mr. Souza frequently deletes opposing viewpoints, but allows racist comments to remain on his page. He is frequently rude and insulting. I have personally been called an idiot by Mr. Souza. Many of us are working to make Elk Grove a more inclusive city. Mr. Souza is not. I'd like to share some quotes directly from his forum. The first is from um an article on June 10th, 2019, regarding health benefits for immigrants age 19 to 25. Mr. Souza says, Elk Grove Laguna Forums, here's a new flash. There is a legal process to enter the country. If you come here illegally, you should get nothing but a return, return trip back home. I'd also like to share one from October 19th, 2019, Elk Grove Laguna Forums, where he responds to uh someone posting on his page that they didn't feel the police department's description was accurate. He says, are you dumb? The police put out a description of the suspect before the arrest. So what do you want me to report? They're looking for a male. You're ridiculous. This is too much stupidity for a Sunday morning. To say it's my responsibility is truly stupid. Another one from March 6th, 2019, Elk Grove Laguna Forums. You win for dumbest comment of the week. More from Elk Grove Laguna Forums about the LGBTQ+ community. Soon, and this is from Mr. Souza himself, soon there will be no man, woman, he, she, him, or her. That's becoming a thing. Some want to be referred to as they. Also, Mr. Souza, as were all these quotes, LGBTQ curriculum, um regarding the LGBTQ curriculum adoption. I'm glad my kids are older and out of school in 2.5 years. The schools have lost their mission and focus. Too much drama going on. Um, in regards to a parent who can vet, uh, express concern about their immunocompromised child being exposed to the coronavirus. You're not being reali-, this is Mr. Souza, you're not being realistic. You literally want everyone to stay locked up to protect your son and others. Not sure you'll find what you want in any community, community if that's your attitude. In response to an opinion piece on the SAC Black Biz page, more proof of outsiders trying to influence what happens here in Elk Grove and trying to make Elk Grove more like Sacramento. We need to reject these outsiders. He goes on to say, so a page that proclaims to promote business for one ethnic group wants to tell others what to do? I work with business owners of all races, black, white, Hispanic, Asian. It's appalling that anyone would focus on promoting only one group or race. And again, this is in reference to a SAC Sacramento Black Business page. Clearly, Mr. Souza does not understand uh what an inclusive society is, and he is an incredibly poor representation of our city. The council members must not approve this plaque. Thank you.
And we'll flip back to a pre-recorded comment as I believe we have another member of the public wishing to uh dial in for this one.
Hi, this message is for uh City of Elk Grove, um, city clerk. Um, this is in regard to item 10.3 for uh tonight's city council meeting. Um, I'm calling um to not support item 10.3. Um, I would like to make sure that uh Laguna Forums does not receive a resolution um only because the type of reporting that they do is uh has uh racist overtones. And City of Elk Grove fundamentally should not support that because they have too much of a diverse um constituent base. All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
And staff has indicated we have another caller who's calling in, available to be patched through.
Yes, we're ready. Go ahead, Ms. Lewis.
Yes, my name is Sonia Lewis, and I am a longtime um resident of Elk Grove. And I have expressed my opinion there at city council as well as on Laguna, Elk Grove Laguna Forum. It is one of the most racist. I cannot express enough. The most racist, blatantly racist forms of people whose only opinion of racism and not diversity and not inclusion are included and welcomed on that page. Doc Souza perpetuates racism. Doc Souza blocks people who live in this community. I have been blocked from that page on more than one occasion for expressing my care, concern, and just living in black skin and not being able to express the care and concern that I have for my children who walk around Elk Grove and attend Elk Grove Unified School District schools. I am appalled by whoever on the Elk Grove City Council recommended Doc Souza and Elk Grove Laguna Forum for any kind of award. You need to check your soul, whoever made that recommendation and whoever co-signed on that recommendation, because I'm pretty sure it's more than one of you who has done it. And it's a shame, you should feel shame walking into a community that you continue to say, I want to be diverse. We spent all that money a few years ago when white folks put on a black woman's beauty salon business, CCs, and the N-word to have our kids go to school and they have to walk around with the Confederate flag as something that is just the norm, because that's what Elk Grove is. It has always been what Elk Grove is. And it's, it's, it's so appalling that even with the diversity that is on the city council of Elk Grove, none of you are people of color who stand up for people of color. It is shameful. I am so not proud to be an Elk Grovean. It's only because I know that the school system is a tad bit better than that of Sacramento City Unified School District are we still in Elk Grove. That is the only reason. And I, like, I cannot express how appalled I am, how ashamed all of you should feel for making a recommendation and letting Doc Souza's name come out your mouth without scolding him, without shunning him, without putting him down every time he excludes people of color. It is unacceptable.
And I think that was the last of our call-in callers, and I have a few more pre-recorded comments as well.
Hello, my name is Vanessa Tullis, and I'm an Elk Grove resident. And I would like my recorded call.
my recorded comments to be played into the record for item 10.3. I do not support the city giving recognition to Elk Grove Laguna Forums and its owner-operator Doc Souza. The Elk Grove Laguna News webpage publishes crime reports and city news that appear to give legitimacy to this one-man operation, when Doc in fact posts them on his Facebook page, Elk Grove Laguna Forums. These crime reports publish photos, which are often garnering criticisms of the people's appearance, such as a black man's nose being too wide or comparisons to animals. And instead of disallowing this type of racist content, Doc engages both personally and as the page moderator to defend this type of behavior, routinely name-calling and blocking people he perceives as left of his political beliefs. An organization that purports to be a news source and disparages members of the community for sharing their view on his public forum should not be given accolades by the city. Are we or aren't we a place for hate? Further, the actual news resource, the Elk Grove Citizen, has been in operation since 1909, according to their website, and this council has failed to recognize their 110 years of service to the community in 2019. If we're not recognizing Elk Grove Citizen, what are the real motivations behind bringing this to council multiple times? Please stop using your political platforms as a fundraising tool for elections and serve the people. In a pandemic nonetheless, it's shameful. This council is failing the residents of Elk Grove by continuing to agendize items that do not help residents' safety or recovery. Better. Thank you.
And I have one final prerecorded comment here.
Hi, my name is Monica Madrid, and I live in Elk Grove. I live in Councilmember Hume's district. I would like this comment to be public comment and heard at the city council meeting, and I am calling in to speak about item 10.3, and I'm calling to speak against that measure. Unfortunately, Mr. Souza has come up and made some racist remarks to some of my friends and colleagues, and I have seen those posts on social media and also seen other messages as well, especially when there are people who are candidates running for office in different parts of Elk Grove. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
And that concludes the submitted audio comments and call-in comments, and I've checked my email, and there's no other further comments that have come in on this item.
Let's go ahead and close public comments. Council deliberation in progress.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go first, since it was my request, and I will put it out there that I was the one that pulled that plaque together for Elk Grove Laguna Forums for their 10 years of informing our city of news and information that was going on. And so I appreciate the council agreeing to bring this back for a discussion, for an official ratification. And so I think it's more of just, you know, the plaque is already there, and it's got some of our names on there, and I'd like to kind of take the temperature of the council to see whether or not we want to officially ratify this plaque or not. But it's already there, and Mr. Doc Souza already has the plaque.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll jump in the fray here. You know, I feel bad that this item got to this point for the reasons that it has. You know, I've known Doc Souza a long time, and I've not known him to be racist. I've not known his family to be racist. I have no idea what transpires on his Facebook page commenters, as I don't participate on Facebook. I think he does provide a service to the City of Elk Grove. Somebody mentioned the Elk Grove Citizen. I know that when Roy was still alive, we honored him every which way but Sunday, and we have honored the Citizen in the past. Look, this thing came together with, I was asked to support providing a resolution to Doc. I sent that email to city executive team, was informed that you, Mr. Mayor, had advised against the resolution. The next thing that I knew, I was asked to provide a campaign logo to go on a plaque to go ahead and honor him anyway, and I agreed to do that. And so, you know, as far as for any Brown Act violation, I have not participated in the Brown Act. I don't need any cleaning up of any Brown Act accusations, but I just feel a little unfortunate that somebody has been sullied, on his birthday no less, in a manner that, you know, I think it's for political beliefs as much as it is any actual transgression. So I don't know that anything needs to be done at this point. I thought we were bringing this back because we wanted to have the official resolution with you included was my intention, but if we want to ratify this plaque or not, he's emailed all of us and said that he doesn't care one way or another, so.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Hume. Vice Mayor, Councilman Lawson.
Yeah, I'll jump in. Yeah, I agree. It's kind of unfortunate, you know? We recognize all kinds of businesses, and I've known Doc and his wife Sally both for many, many years, and they're very supportive. They do a lot of good in the community, make a lot of community donations, have a very, very well-respected two businesses in Elk Grove. And the point was to recognize a business. It wasn't saying we endorse their business. It's, you know, we do these things all the time, and I think there was four council members that requested this from the city clerk, and the mayor chose to not support this, so it wasn't done, which is unfortunate. I still support that we gave him a plaque, and I think if he's good with that, that's fine. If we want to do something additional, that's fine, too. I can go either way.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I'll just add similar comments. I mean, I haven't known Doc and his wife Sally as long as some others, but I've known them to be very good people as well. Of course, you know, I've not gotten into much political debates on that, I'll admit that, but, you know, nonetheless, I agree with Councilmember or Vice Mayor Detrick. This is about the service that was provided, recognizing someone who provided a lot of like news and just what's going on in the community. And it sounds like a lot of people go to the site regardless of how they feel about the owner. So anyway, it was met in good spirit, nothing, I'm not trying to make a political statement or anything. It's unfortunate it got taken this way as well, you know, and, you know, I'm fine with moving forward with it. We've already done it in terms of, you know, if he's already gotten it, then why would we go backwards there, so.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Lawson. Just to clarify, I know that the Vice Mayor brought up my position on this. What I do is whenever there's a request for resolutions, I always look to it to see whether there's any potential controversy, and in the event that there potentially could be, I certainly, out of respect, I want all the council members to be able to weigh in and to have the public be aware that we're considering an item. And so this request came from Councilmember Sun to the city clerk, which came to me. And what I said was, because of what I have heard from the community, I am concerned. And so in my tenure as the mayor of the City of Elk Grove, there's only two times in which I brought resolution request to council. One, on what I potentially saw as potentially controversial, which was recognizing LGBTQ, and I can't remember the exactly exact language, whether it was a flag issue or a month, I'm not quite sure, but I requested for the council to consider this, because regardless of my own personal opinion on it, I think that it was more important to hear my colleagues, all of you, weigh in. And so that item was brought by the clerk, and this is the second item that was brought. And the reason and the rationale behind it is because I was deeply concerned about some of these comments that I've heard about the community. That's the reason why I would not sign on immediately, and I wanted an opportunity to hear from the public to see what exactly transpired on this forum. I am aware of it, but I don't go on it, and I don't know the conduct of Mr. Souza and the rhetoric in which he kicks out on this particular forum. That being the case, some of the comments that I've heard tonight gave me some deep concern, especially for a city like Elk Grove, that we've worked so hard to be a diverse city of inclusion. And so if any of these is true, then it gives me some serious concerns about the action in which we as a city council would be doing. I don't fault Mr. Souza for his work in the community. I'm sure it's very beneficial. I think it's good to have a forum where everyone can actually participate, but some of the speakers have mentioned that he had a tendency to block individuals. That does raise some concerns as well. But I think the underlying issue here that I'm really, really concerned about is the passionate statement by one of the speakers, I want to say Ms. Sonia Lewis. You know, obviously, she is a regular on the forum, and that does raise some, to a level in which, you know, as the mayor of the City of Elk Grove, a mayor who is a person of color, a mayor who is the first small mayor in the United States of America, I'm quite proud of Elk Grove and what we stand. I'm quite proud of the work of Jason Bierman, Cara Ridding, and their efforts to, you know, to create diversity in the city staff. I'm quite proud of the chief, police chief, and his efforts to recruit and diversify our police force. I think that's what Elk Grove stands for. I think if we go in this direction, we go and recognize what we essentially do is we legitimize someone who's been pushing this forward. That being the case, I'm certainly not prepared. Councilmembers, if you want to move on this, that's fine, but I will direct staff specifically to leave my name off of any plaque or any resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your comments, and I don't want to get too far down in the weeds in this, but don't feign ignorance on all of this. Doc has sent an email requesting that you unblock him from your Facebook page, so there is the ongoing tit-for-tat between the two of you, and I just, I don't think this thing needs to be legitimized or discredited any further than it is. I'm ready to move on or adopt the plaque, whatever my colleagues want to do.
So thank you, Councilman Hume, for reminding of that, and I've been communicating with Mr. Souza on a regular basis. We are trying to figure this out. It's not deliberate to block him, but I welcome an opportunity to engage him. Just, you know, we just can't figure it out. So thank you for reminding me, Councilmember Hume, but we are continuing to work on this.
Hey, I'm asking to get an official ratification of this plaque.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second to ratify this plaque?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Darren Sun, Councilman Sun has seconded the motion to ratify this plaque. All right, Mr. Clerk, let's go ahead and call the question.
For the roll call vote, in order to ratify the plaque as it stands, Councilmember when?
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sun.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Absolutely no.
With a 4-1 vote, that item will pass.
If I can make one last comment relative to this, Doc Souza has, his site has more views than I believe all the other sites combined, including the Elk Grove Citizen. So you're always going to have a certain percentage of people who disagree with you, just like there's people who disagree with the Elk Grove Citizen and some of the other bloggers. But I think if you look at the total volume of what he does, there's very, very few people that have issues with him. It's probably 1%.
All right, let's move to the next item.
That'll move us on to item 10.4, which is to receive a review of potential governance changes available for a general law city at the upcoming election, including consideration of actions to eliminate the office of the elected mayor and other election governance-related Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. In preparation of this item, this stemmed from discussions from the April 22nd, 2020 regular meeting, where primarily we were talking at that meeting about term limits and looking at how term limits could be synchronized together. During that discussion, it was asked that we kind of continue that discussion but expand it, as there were elements that were brought up about what would occur in putting forward a measure to eliminate the office of mayor. And so what the staff report encompasses is what are the types of measures or actions that can be taken by a general law city in order to change its governance structure? I think one of the important underlying elements to this staff report is that any kind of change that's going to be enacted, the change in governance structures, is going to be a change that involves a measure that must be formalized by further action of the council, which staff would look to see to finalize that within the next few months if there is a measure put forward. But that measure would qualify to go then on to the November 2020 ballot, and it would be a decision by the voters of Elk Grove whether that measure passes or fails. I think that from the discussion and what was asked for being returned, what staff did return is just kind of a tail-end discussion about term limits and whether or not there was consideration when we looked further into that issue. The asking of the question in particular about whether the office of the mayor is to extend to a four-year term is an individual measure question that would have to be asked separate of anything else of asking terms or anything of that nature. And that's part of what we wanted to underline in this presentation of the staff report. What was the more probably predominant feature is the discussion about the elimination of the office of mayor, and that, too, would be a measure that would go before the voters, posing that question whether or not the voters would want to eliminate the office. What became an interesting phenomenon as staff looked at it is that the effect of a measure to eliminate the office of mayor, if it were to move forward on the November 2020 election, is that if that measure was successful, so if the vote was yes, eliminate the office of the directly elected mayor, it would have some interesting effects in that the contest that would be going in November 2020 for the office of mayor would not have a seat to be filled, because the measure would effectively remove the office of mayor. Now, what that does is when it removes the office of mayor is it doesn't eliminate an elected position, it just changes the status of that elected mayor position back to a council member position, and so it is still an individual that would be elected by the people. What it is is a change of the nature of the office, the description of the office. As we move forward into that, looking at it from a staff perspective, is that if such a measure was to be successful, and it was, it did dissolve the seat of mayor, where we would be in a situation for the City of Elk Grove is that the effect would be that the city council would expand to a five-member body, so that position that was previously the elected mayor would revert back to a council member seat. But the issue that we have at hand is that we only have a district map that divides the city into four districts, and if the measure to eliminate the office of mayor was successful in November 2020, we'd be looking at a situation where we would have five council member seats, but we would only have a four-district map. Without having the office of the elected mayor, the election results of November 2020 would not fill that seat that became vacant, reverting it back to a council seat, because that was an election contest for the office of mayor. That election would not seat anyone. What we would see in November 2020 is that we would have a five-council body, but we would be absent one council member, and we would have a district map that only had four districts. As staff further kind of kicked that question down the line, when you start looking at these scenarios of not having a district map, if you do not have one on hand at the time of when the vacancy occurs, there is the clock that ticks on when a vacancy happens, and that's within 60 days. You either make an appointment as the legislative body, or you hold a special election. Without a map, we would pretty quickly move into the realm of holding a special election, which has its own associated costs. But the part of the reason for that is the 60-day timeframe would make it administratively impossible to go through a process of creating district maps unless you started creating districts' maps earlier. And so the legislature has been going around and changing and revising the codes about how a council body can change the district map. The city council does have the authority to change a district map and have a process of looking at that map. What that, in order to make that map effective, though, there are requirements that your underlying governance structure has to map, has to coordinate with the map that you're presenting, and that's where we get into kind of the discussion about timing. Any kind of consideration, when we looked also and just kind of extracted back about timing, is that if you look at mapmaking in- timing, is that if you look at mapmaking in this timeframe, anywhere from now until the start of the new year, we're still not going to have the results of the census. And so any kind of process in which you have a public hearing process, and you're examining the possibilities of creating a five district council map, you'd be using the data from 2010. And I think we've had some of that discussion back in 2019 when we went through our respective districting process. So part of this was, as staff, as we went through this item, was to look at this concept of what measures could be presented, what would be the effect of measures when we come around to November 2020, but then to open this discussion up for the council to look at the governance structure of Elk Grove and see how you would like to proceed. Beyond that, there is, in the financial section, there's provisional costs that would come up, depending on what type of path the city council proceeds down. The other element in all of this is, again, to reiterate, that any kind of change is not something that happens by a vote of the council tonight. It's something that would be a change that would be put forward through a measure. The measure would have to go through a process, and this is what we did touch upon back in April, at that meeting of April 22. But a measure is a process of putting together the question itself, and then having a public review process of the question with the opportunity for individuals to submit rebuttals and arguments against the measure. And then that gets to the point when it consolidates and qualifies to be on the ballot, and it won't actually be voted on until November 2020, any kind of measure that the city puts forward. So with that, the variations of measures, what types of things could be asked, or what actions could be entitled or involved in any of these processes, there's some kind of benchmark costs that are put into the staff report, and also organized in the table attachment of Attachment 2, to kind of couch how much the costs, depending on what kind of activity we engage in, in presenting a measure, can be seen upon the city. But with that, I'm open for any questions, and then I can also kind of give us a status, shot status of where we are with the public comment that we have on this item.
Are there any questions? I hear that there are no questions. So let's go ahead and move on to public comment. Want to open a public comment, Mr. Clerk?
So, let me see how I can couch this. To give you a sense, what I have received prior to the meeting is 25 written comments that have been circulated around to the city council. I've also received various comments that have been coming in via email since the meeting has started. I also have 109 recorded phone message comments. And we also have two call-in commenters who've called in. But there are extensive comments that have been received by the city of Elk Grove. As they have been received, those comments have been put into a centralized folder that are accessible, that were made accessible for the city council to be able to access. Many of the comments did follow what appears to be a form template. And so for a lot of the comments, they are very brief, but they are following what is a written form. And I believe it was posted on websites online, probably circulated via email. And so we did see quite a number, and part of it is this process of us having these telecommute meetings in which we are trying to facilitate public comment. But it appears we might be a little bit of victims of our own success, getting flooded with a lot of these comments that typically we'd see in something such as a petition or something that would consolidate such comment. Through our process, we have 109 phone messages. So I'm available for how the council would like to proceed with handling all of the messages that we've received on this item.
Mr. Clerk, is there a general message that's coming through with these recorded messages in which you can summarize? I think it would probably be helpful if there's anything, any one member of the public that detracts from this form messaging that you're hearing.
So if I can, just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, are you looking for kind of a summary of comments that I've?
Yeah, I think, I think what, my struggle here is this, you know, we've committed to people that if they request to have their comments played in public or read and onto the record, that we will honor that. My struggle here is what, now have they all said that they wanted their comments to be read in public, or can we, you save time and just summarize some of these comments that either had been pre-recorded or sent in?
I think a summary is available. I think part of the issue that I've, that I'm seeing, is that the nature of the form letter starts, I would like my comments to be read into the public record. And so there's a, there's kind of a prompt for a lot of folks that did call in, and then they're reading the statement. I can read that statement, but again, even beyond that statement, with 109 calls, we also have a variety of other comments that are made by folks. So whether they kind of stay to just saying that statement, there's also a lot of calls that come in, they're in the same category, I would say, of sentiment, it's just they touch on different topics. But if you'd like, I can take a shot at summarizing it and see how that sits with the council. But again, too, these comments were also made available to the council for you to be able to hear as we receive them. They were coming in fast and furious for this item. So the process didn't start, I don't think, until Monday. And so between Monday and today, 109 phone messages came in on the topic.
Okay, and yet I'm, I'm open to just starting and seeing how far we get. If we begin to see, to hear the same thing over and over again, it's obvious that that's the direction, right? But I have, to be quite honest with you, just the number of emails that I've received, I was overwhelmed with. So I sense that you're, you probably saw the same thing.
Without any further ado, do you wish to start fielding? We have some public callers. I think that might be the best way to start.
Yeah, this is, go ahead and start fielding.
That are live on the line, and we'll start with that. So, and we'll turn to staff. I believe we have one of the callers on the line.
We do. Ms. Rodriguez, you may go ahead now.
Thank you. This is Jennifer Rodriguez. I'm a resident of Elk Grove, and I'm opposed to eliminating the position of an elected mayor for spending funds to consider eliminating the office. The city the size of Elk Grove needs to have an elected mayor. The mayor represents our city and should be elected by the people. During this challenging time, city funds should be going to help the citizens of Elk Grove, not to make our city less democratic. And I just want to add that part of the reason we need a mayor is because what happened on the last agenda item was an embarrassment by four of our city council members. I don't know how, I've been watching the live stream, you could listen to this, to people call in and just willfully ignore the will of the people of Elk Grove who've called in to say, well, I've never looked at this page, or I don't follow it, or, you know, Good Old Boy Network, I've known them for a long time. Maybe look at the page before you recognize somebody for something. That was just a travesty. And the thought of having one of the four of you be the mayor who represents our city, that's an embarrassment, because that was just shameful. At the very least, you could have tabled the discussion and looked for yourselves before you gave somebody an award. It's incredibly disappointing. I want to thank the mayor for having a strong moral compass on that issue. Thank you.
And I think staff are pulling up the next caller. We only have two callers that have requested to be signed in, and so what I will do is start with the audio comments.
Hi, I'd like to make a comment on Agenda Item 10.4.
Whoops, won't help if I don't turn the audio on. So pardon me, missed a click.
Hi, I'd like to make a comment on Agenda Item 10.4 of tomorrow's city council meeting. I'm a resident of Elk Grove, a homeowner, and I actually work in the city as an essential worker for a nonprofit. I'd like to state and have this statement read as public record, that I am absolutely in favor of four-year terms and opposed to eliminating elections for the office of mayor. We worked hard to have that put on the ballot several years ago, and I believe it is my right, responsibility, and pleasure to be able to vote for the officers who conduct the affairs of our city. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
And I believe we have the caller on the line.
We do. Mr. Sherhill, you can go ahead. You have three minutes.
Oh, can you hear me okay?
Coming in loud and clear.
Thank you. My name is Amor Sherhill. I'm an Elk Grove father of three. Regarding this item, I don't begrudge Councilmember Swen, Detrick, or Hume wanting a discussion regarding the elimination of the elected mayor. There's a value to discussing ideas, even ones that are really bad. You all may need to hear why it's bad before you realize that it's bad. The problem here is that there is zero discussion by Swen, Detrick, and Hume of eliminating this position when Detrick, Hume, and Wen were trying to put Darren Swen into that position. It's fair to say that if you had been successful in making Swen the mayor, that Detrick, Hume, and Wen would not then be trying to get rid of him during his first term. Darren Swen, council member, didn't say during his campaign, I want to be elected to this position so that I can eliminate it. It's fairly obvious that your objection is not the elected mayor position. What you really have a problem with is that the voters soundly rejected Darren Swen. They didn't want him to be mayor. Now you're trying to find ways to get around the will of the voters. That's a bad way to govern. If you believe in good faith, embarking on this process during a pandemic, I don't know what you're thinking, but it's a mistake. Folks don't have time to pay attention to this right now. Asking all of these people, over 100 people, to take time out when they clearly have other things to worry about. It's unethical to ask them to do this. You're wasting city time and money on this. You have all taken hundreds of thousands of dollars from corporate actors outside of this city. Use some of that money on your own. Do your own constituent outreach. Spend some of that. Don't waste our time. Find out on your own. Nobody wants this. Exactly zero people were advocating, coming to council, asking for this change. Take some of the hundreds of thousands of dollars that fund your campaign, use that money to learn that this is a horrible idea, but do it on your own time. I hope that Councilmembers Swen, you reverse your inclination to support this process.
One minute remaining.
Councilmembers Detrick, Hume, and Wen, you all reverse your inclination to support this process and agree, this isn't the right time. Let's focus on helping people that are suffering in this pandemic. Thank you.
And I'll carry on with the pre-recorded comments.
This is a public comment for Item 10.4 on the city council agenda on Wednesday. Please play my comment for the record publicly. I am a constituent. I support directly elected mayor for a four-year term. My name is Jack Washington. Thank you.
Hi, Jason. My name is Stan Saler. I'm a resident of Elk Grove, homeowner, taxpayer. I would like to leave a comment on Item 10.4 on the agenda for the council. I'd like my comment to be played into public record. First of all, I am definitely in favor of electing the mayor. I think the mayor's position should remain one that should be elected by the residents of Elk Grove. And I'm also in favor of four-year term limits. Please play this into the record for public, and thank you for your time, Jason. Again, my name is Stan Saler, a resident of Elk Grove. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dr. Anthony White, and this is a public comment for Item 10.4. Please play my comment during the recording publicly. I am a constituent, and I support a directly elected mayor for a four-year term. I think that the city needs that in order for this city to grow. We cannot go back to the old way of doing things. We have to have a big-city mindset in order for us to do big-city things. Again, my name is Dr. Anthony White, and thank you for this opportunity.
Hi, this is a public comment for Item 10.4. Please play my comment for the record publicly. I am a constituent. I support a directly elected mayor for a four-year term. Thank you.
Hi, this is a public comment for Item 10.4. I'm okay to play my comment for the record publicly. This is Shan Shan Li. I'm a citizen of Elk Grove. I'm calling to support a directly elected mayor for a four-year term. Thank you. This is Shan Shan Li. I can be reached at number 6, 606-5288. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Noren Biyoung. I'm calling for the public comment on Agenda Item 10.4. Please play my comment for the record publicly. I am a resident of Elk Grove, and I am a constituent. I support a directly elected mayor for a four-year term. Any other information, you can call me at 916-230-3684. Thank you. Okay.
I'm just going to step in. We had a few commenters that I'm not sure they intended to have their comments continue, and that was one of the instances in which anyone that's interested in hearing the full call, they can contact the city clerk. But I'm going to move on to comment number eight.
Mr. Lindgren, I'm sorry, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are they all pretty much the same thing? Because it seems like they're saying the same four things. They're a constituent, they want it played, they want an elected mayor, and they're all saying the exact same thing. So it sounds like they all had a template sent to them, and they're all just reading pretty much the same things. Are all of them that way?
I would agree that there are, of the 109, what I was able to do is, I think from, there's about 35% of them that might be a little bit different, but most of them do follow that format. I can see about kind of filtering it to a point where we cover the ones that have comments extenuating beyond just those kind of points that you called out, which are basically like those from a form template.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, are we asking to listen to all 109? And I don't know, Mr. Hobbs, if you can comment, do we, can we choose to not go through all 109 of them, or are we bound to having to listen to all 109 of them?
So, no, you're not, you're not bound to listen to all of them. The council does have discretion of reasonably limit public comment. What I think I'm hearing from the city clerk is that all the comments are substantively the same, if not very, very similar. So with that representation, if you choose to accept that representation, which I have no reason to doubt its veracity, then the council does have the discretion to limit public comment, and you don't have to listen to all of them. I know the audio files have been sent to the council, so those are available. And you do have the discretion to limit the amount of time for public comment.
I think my, my only issue and concern with this is I certainly have not listened to all of the 100 comments, and I think it might be vitally important that there is a member of the public that has brought issues that I haven't yet considered. And if we're going to deliberate on this, I am open to hearing it all. You know, I think that's, that's, at least that we can do. I certainly signed up for this job to hear the concerns of the community. So the more I think about it, I'm more inclined to listen to every one of them.
Can I ask a procedural question? It's Councilmember Hume. Mr. Hobbs, if we were going to table this item with no further action, would that negate the need for the remainder of the public comment period?
Yes.
All right, then, then I think, given the timing and sequencing considerations laid out by staff and the fact that we have the census information coming out, there's no feasible way that this would apply for this election in any sort of elegant fashion. So we're looking at a November 2022 opportunity to implement any changes. I wanted to have a larger discussion, but it sounds like that just muddies the water. So I'll make a motion that we just, I don't even know if we need an official motion, but I would move or recommend that we just table this item.
Second.
All right, I got a motion, second roll call vote.
For the roll call vote to table this item, Councilmember Wen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Soon.
I'll just quickly say, like, I always appreciate the dialogue on issues, and, you know, with my vote, I'm And, you know, with my vote, I'm not supporting further movement of this either. We've got more important things to do, so yes.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes, let's move on.
So, Mayor, members of the council, since it's a quarter to 10, and I doubt we're gonna get through all the items, this might be a good chance, if you want to waive the 10 o'clock rule.
All right, is there a desire to waive the 10 o'clock rule?
Kind of desire or willingness?
Either or. What is the urgency on the other items?
We have two awards of public works projects, which are time-sensitive, 10.5 and 10.6. And then the funding for that is on your finance authority, 11.2. I would highly recommend we hear all those items tonight.
All right, let's muster on. Okay, did I hear a consensus, or do we need actual vote on this?
Since we're remote, why don't we do a vote, just so we're clear? I don't know who made the motion to waive the 10 o'clock rule.
I believe Councilman Hume made the motion. Is that correct? If not, I'll go ahead and make the motion. And, okay, I'll go ahead and second that, then. Let's do a roll call.
For the roll call vote, Councilmember Wen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Yes.
Councilmember Swen. We'll see if it's a connection issue. Councilmember Swen, do you, this is the vote for waiving the 10 o'clock rule.
Yes, did it not come off mute? Yes.
No, you're muted.
That's all right. That's part of our process here, telecommuting. Vice Mayor Detrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes, please.
I would just like to note that what staff will be presenting is items 10.5 and 10.6 in combination. And part of it is because they are tied together in relation to the convening of our next meeting for Section 11. So I'll let staff go into the descriptions, but I'll be opening up both 10.5 and 10.6 at this time. Item 10.5 is being, receiving information about the awarding a contract for the Railroad Street Improvement Projects and the Old Town Plaza Phase 2 and 3 projects, including various actions. And item 10.6 is going to be considering the authorizing the city manager to enter and execute the construction contract for the District 56 Nature Area Project. And without further ado, I will hand it over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and council members. I'm Kristen Parsons, Senior Civil Engineer for the Capital Improvement Program. I'm here tonight to present item 10.5 for the award of construction contract for Railroad Street and Old Town Plaza, these 2 and 3 projects. These projects are located in Old Town Elk Grove. You're likely familiar with the Old Town Plaza site at the corner of Elk Grove Boulevard and Railroad Street. The Railroad Street project extends from Elk Grove Boulevard along the UPRR railroad tracks to the unnamed channel. This will also include Grove Street along the front edge of the Old Town Plaza parcel and exclude and includes the two existing dirt parking lots. The Railroad Street Improvements Project is intended to create a space that is inviting and welcoming, to improve circulation and access to the area for pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicles, and to provide improvements necessary for future development. The project will correct drainage issues, improve pavement deficiencies, provide street improvements with accessible paths of travel, provide missing utilities, underground many of the overhead utilities, provide additional parking, and provide two-way access while still preserving the existing buildings. The goal of the Old Town Plaza Phase 2 and 3 project is to create a formal space to accommodate existing events, expand opportunities for future events, and to establish a community gathering space centrally located within the Old Town Elk Grove area. The project will provide a public plaza with a large, open-air pavilion, a variety of outdoor public seating and trellis structures, walkways, landscaping, lighting, and bike parking.
All have the same message. It has to be read into the record because it's based, it's what those guys all put together.
We have included one additive.
We are picking up some audio. Just want to remind members that if you're not, as Ms. Parsons is presenting, to have their microphones on mute. Thank you.
We have included one additive alternate in the bid schedule for these projects, and that's for the pavilion at Old Town Plaza. The pavilion has been designed to work with the aesthetics of the existing restroom, as you can see here. And the open-air design allows flexibility and access for different types of events. There has been extensive outreach occurring for these projects since the property was purchased in 2012. The city began analyzing the land use constraints and opportunities for land planning purposes immediately after purchase. In a citywide survey in 2013, it was determined that residents view Old Town Elk Grove as a destination for special events. Staff provided several updates to city council and received direction three times in 2014 and 2015. The land use planning outreach continued in 2015 and included working with adjacent property and business owners, the Trails Committee, the Old Town Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, the Historic Preservation Committee, regional land developers, and we also held a pop-up workshop in 2015. In December of 2016, the Planning Commission approved the land use change and design review. In January of 2017, city council adopted the initial study mitigated negative declaration for the projects. And in the summer that year, we completed the Old Town Plaza Phase 1 project, including the restroom and minor site improvements. That brings us to the current condition of the site. Design started on Old Town Plaza Phase 2 in February of 2018. And later that summer, we decided to, or later that summer, design began on the Railroad Street project. The projects were presented to the Disability Advisory Committee in March of 2019, and the projects were then revised to incorporate their requests. A supplemental ISMND was developed and circulated for public comment for approximately 60 days, 30 days is the requirement. We extended that to almost 60 days. That was in April of last year. And in addition, we expanded the notification area from our typical 500-foot radius to a 1/4-mile radius. This expanded notification area was carried on throughout the rest of the project for all public noticing. Staff held a joint open house in May during the public comment period for the ISMND, supplemental ISMND, so we could present these projects. And in addition, we mailed notifications. We employed the use of social media posts regarding the open house. We had website updates during this time. We provided information in the city's calendar, and we had newspaper notifications and articles. Staff received direction to accelerate design of Phase 3 for the Old Town Plaza in July last year. And shortly thereafter, we presented the project to the Arts Commission. Around that same time, city council approved the supplemental ISMND. And last fall, we circulated the NEPA document with public comment, which was extended from the required 15 days to a 30-day period. At the end of that period, the city requested the release of CDVG funds from HUD for the Railroad Street project. And on December 13, HUD authorized the use of said grant funds. Our anticipated construction schedule is shown here. We're looking if the projects are awarded this evening to issue a notice to proceed this summer. Off-site storm drain would be complete later this summer. Utilities would be complete late fall or early winter of this year, with substantial completion of improvements for both Old Town Plaza and the Railroad Street Improvements Project in the spring of 2021. We have a one-year plant establishment period, which would be complete then in the spring of 2022. These projects were advertised originally in January of this year. The city opened bids in February. We did receive a bid protest, and the city council at their March 11 city council meeting directed staff to reject those bids and rebid the project. We then looked for ways to reduce some of the costs and made some changes to the plans and specifications, prepared the revised bid package, and re-advertised the project in March. We received five bids on April 8. There was one bid protest received, however, that was from the third bidder, and the concerns in the protest were deemed minor waivable irregularities. The total estimated project costs with the additive alternate for the pavilion is $7.6 million for the Railroad Street Improvements Project. $4.7 million for the Old Town Plaza, including the pavilion, and a total estimated project cost of $12.28 million. If council directs staff to award the projects without the additive alternate for the pavilion, these costs would be reduced by a little over $1 million for a total estimated project cost of $11.25 million. The low bids received represent a $700,000 savings from the original bids we received in February. And in addition, the additive alternate for the pavilion is $73,000 less than our engineer's estimate was. In addition, I just want to mention that Phase 3 of the Old Town Plaza was not previously funded. As I mentioned, last July, we accelerated design for that. And this was previously shown as a future phase beyond the five-year time horizon of the CIP. The proposed award requires an additional $3.5 million to move the Phase 3 project into the current fiscal year and fully fund the project. However, the city originally anticipated a total cost of $6.3 million. So the cost shown here on this table represents the savings of $1.6 million, which was anticipated for the Old Town Plaza. This slide shows the proposed funding plan for both projects. Staff analyzed the bids in great detail to try to minimize the impacts to the general fund, capital reserve fund, and maximize use of other qualifying funding sources. In summary, we are proposing to add almost $1.9 million in SB 1 local streets and roads funds to these projects. We are also proposing to add $540,000 in drainage fees, and we are looking to add $1.9 million in debt proceeds, which will be addressed tonight under item 11.2. These projects came together with the help of many internal and external partners, as you can see here. Our consultant team for design of the project included Willdan Engineering, Dachan Engineering, Calendar &amp; Associates, and Inner West Consulting. Many city departments internally prepared as well. We worked closely with Economic Development, Finance, Building Department, Fleet and Facilities, Public Affairs, and the City Attorney's Office. We also appreciate the role that HUD played in providing funding for the Railroad Street Improvements Project and our housing specialist, Sarah Bonchager's assistance and guidance in keeping us compliant. The Arts Commission and Disability Advisory Committee both participated, as I mentioned, in the development of the project, and we worked diligently with several outside agencies for approvals as well. So I'm here tonight to recommend the following actions be taken. The first resolution requests that council execute a construction contract with Western Engineering Contractors, approve change order authority for the projects, amend the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget, and 2019, 2024 Capital Improvement Program. The second resolution requests that council declare the city's intent to reimburse expenditures for the Old Town Plaza Phases 2 and 3 projects from the proceeds of future debt issuances and directing certain actions. That will be presented tonight in item 11.2. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. But as Jason mentioned, we ask that you hold off on any action on this item until after 11.2 has been acted on.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, hearing that there are no questions, let's go ahead and open up for a public comment for 10.5. Mr. Clerk, does anyone want to sign up to speak or have submitted comments?
No, I do not have any members of the public that have submitted earlier comments or signed up to speak on item 10.5.
All right, let's go ahead and close public comment, council deliberation and direction. I can go ahead and start first. You know, I like the concept, I like the direction, and I'm comfortable with moving forward. Members? I need two more.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Well, as I understood it, we have to wait till after 11.2?
Well, Councilmember Hume, what you can do, you can certainly deliberate. You can even come to some tentative thoughts on this, but we don't want to take final action until after 11.2. So you could even go so far as a non-binding straw vote, but it's good enough if you just get kind of general consensus that you support staff's recommendation, and then we will take the formal action at 11.2. Does that make sense?
Sure, you could just put me in the yes column then and let me know when it's time to go on record.
Great.
Same here, ditto.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, let's. Uh huh. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Same.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Let's move to the next item.
And that'll transition us to that further presentation on item 10.6, as we kind of hold 10.5 and 10.6 kind of in this open position. But I think staff has a presentation on item 10.6 as well. And I think they're just pulling that information up. And I will just note one item, Mayor, is since we did open up a specific public comment opportunity for 10.5, it'll take a moment to do that too, but we'll make it through the presentation here first.
Okay.
Okay, Jason, we're ready.
Go right ahead, and we're hearing you loud and clear. Presentation looks good.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. John Griffin, one of the senior civil engineers in the CIP Division. I'm here to present to you a status update and our recommended action for award of a construction contract for the District 56 Nature Area Project. Tonight, I will briefly talk about all of the items listed here on our agenda. I will jump right out of the purpose and need. You've probably seen this slide before, but I'll go ahead and read it over briefly again. The purpose for the project is to complete the District 56 South Campus, the unapproved area that is located south of the Aquatic and Community Centers. But the project will allow us to keep that open space feel that is currently out on the site now. And it allows it, and by, we will achieve that by placing our structured elements on the north end, by placing our more passive uses on the south end, and embracing and improving the existing pond that is at the core and the center of the project site. Again, the project is located south of the Community and Aquatic Center. It is bounded by Big Horn and lots. The actual project improvement areas are shown outlined in blue. Tonight, we have five recommended actions. The first one will be to execute a construction contract. The second will be to authorize change order authority. The third will be execute a construction contract with the second lowest bidder, if necessary. The fourth action is to amend the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget and the 2019 and 2024 CIP to add construction funding. And fifth, to execute a contract amendment with Helix for construction support. In development of this project, we have hosted several public meetings over the past two years. Three of those public meetings occurred during the schematic design phase. The first was a neighborhood meeting with the Park Gate Community, who is located directly to the east of the project site. I received some good feedback from them, and from there, we went to a larger neighborhood meeting before going to the Trails Committee. All within, those three meetings all occurred within about a month. From there, we took the input received at those three meetings and presented a first schematic design concept to council. schematic design concept to council in March of 2018, received feedback, refined the schematic design, and came back with our final schematic design in June of 2018. One of the many important items that we heard at that meeting in June was to really investigate our project costs and to see if there are ways to refine the cost, but still to achieve the overall goals and objectives of the project. After that, we went ahead and advertised a project for bids, I'm sorry, advertised a project for, request for proposals, and we awarded a good design project. And from there, during the design phase, we actually had, we had another three public meetings. The first occurred in April of 2019, and that was a presentation to the Arts Commission where we asked for their feedback on location for the kinetic art sculpture, art piece that will be placed at the project site. And along with that, we asked them for input on how to integrate art into both the play area, into the play area facilities. After the, last fall, we had another public meeting where we provided an update to many of the nearby residents and gave them also feedback and asked for input on the play area and the fitness center. And lastly, just a couple months ago, we provided a project status update to council So based on the input received back in February, we advertised the project as one and did not phase a project. Listed here are a number of the major base bid components that were included in the bid for the project. Also, based on the council feedback in February, we utilized additive alternates to give us some budget flexibility in how we awarded a project. I'll quickly go through each of these six alternates, starting at the bottom right. We have the great lawn area, and the alternate was to replace the hydroseed with sod. Moving counterclockwise, we have a parking lot that it, to improve on its access from the, from the north off Civic Center. And next, we have the future library and cultural arts area, where we will be putting in a lawn area and improving it with storm drain, irrigation, and plantings. Next, we will be improving, additive alternate D will be improving the Westerly Parking Lot that is accessed off of Big Horn. Our fifth alternate, alternate E, is improving the existing area around the SEWA wall site. And the last of the six alternates was replacing the smaller umbrellas over a number of the play structures with more of a larger shades sails that cover the entire play area. Our anticipated construction schedule is shown here. We also anticipated notice to proceed to happen this summer with substantial completion in about a year later, in summer of 2021. This project does have a grant, so we expect our final grant reimbursement to be received in the winter of 2022, and the final plant establishment will be sometime shortly thereafter in the summer. Bids were open last Tuesday, May 5th, and we received a total of four bids. I've shown here that the two lowest bidders were within, were within $8,000, and that gave us good comfort to know that we had really competitive, well-thought-out bids. And we want to also note that those bids came in roughly $1.1 million, or about 10% below the engineer's estimate. For comparison purposes, this table shows the original project costs presented for the schematic design phase back in June of 2018. At that time, the project cost was a little more than $17.6 million. I'm pleased to report that based on the bids and refinement of all of our construction stock costs, we're able to present a project that is under $15 million. That achieved a project total cost savings of roughly $2.7 million, or a 15% reduction in the cost based on the schematic design phase estimate. This project has three identified funding sources. The first here is the existing grant fund from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Our second funding source is the 2005 CFD from Laguna Ridge. And the third funding source contingent upon council approval of item 11.2 tonight is debt proceeds. These three funding sources again will provide roughly $14.97 million towards the project. Similar to what Krista mentioned, there are a number of partners on our project that helped us to get to where we're at now to be able to award the project. And these are just a few, or these are the, I want to highlight a few of the many partners who we have. Obviously, I want to recognize the State Department of Park and Recreation for funding the project. We have our consultant team members, Will Dan, Helix, as well as our environmental team, Hunting and Dockin. We also have a number of city departments. And as mentioned, we have the Arts and Trails Committees, as well as our Park Gate Neighborhood. And we have a number of outside agencies as well that provided input and helped us facilitate permits to move the project to construction. In conclusion, again, I'll read off the five recommended actions. Recommended action one is execute a construction contract with good landscape construction. The second recommended action is to approve, is to authorize the city engineer to approve change orders. The third action is to authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract with the second lowest bidder, if needed. The fourth action is to authorize an amendment to the fiscal year 2019 and 2020 budget and the 2019 and 2024 CIP by roughly $10.7 million, which allows us to add construction phase funding to the project. And lastly, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment with Helix in the amount of $231,770 to provide construction support services. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'm here also to answer any questions you may have. Again, recognizing that we're recommending that council hold off on action until after acting on item 11.2.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you. John, first of all, I'd like to share with you something that my mom shared with me when I was a boy, and I found a toy at a garage sale, and I came home and opened up the catalog to show her how much money I'd be saving if I bought the toy at the garage sale. And she reminded me, if you're buying the toy, you're not saving anything. So it's good that our estimates came in lower than what they were projected, but whenever you're signing a check, you're not technically saving money. That being said, I'm just curious, on the change orders, how did we come up to almost a million and a half in change orders?
So those, that is actually a 15% contingency, and the reason for that-
It's not identified change orders, it's just, it's just a contingency fee put on the bid amount?
Oh, yes, correct. That is, that is a maximum amount for a contingency, if needed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing, hearing that there are no questions, want to open up for public comment. Is there members of public sign up to speak on this item?
And for Mayor and Council, I don't have any pre-signups, don't have any written comments that came in on these items, and checking my comms, I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this one.
Okay, then let's go ahead and close public comment, and I'm fine with the numbers. Let's go forward. I need two others.
Yes, go forward.
Yes.
All right, sounds good. Let's move on to items, item 11.
Yeah, so as we're holding open, kind of items 10.5 and 10.6, what we're going to be doing is moving into Section 11, which is that convening of the meeting, and I'll let you take that home, and then we can do the roll call for the Finance Authority, Mayor. But if you want to introduce and open up and convene our meeting here.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Let's go ahead and convene the city council and Finance Authority a joint regular meeting. Roll call, please.
And for the roll call, and I do just want to note that for the service of all council members, as members of the Finance Authority, there is no additional stipend or compensation that is received by any members of the city council for serving as members of the Finance Authority. It's merely the position, no compensation additional for serving on this board. With that, Board Member Wen.
Yeah.
Board Member Hume.
Here.
Board Member Soen.
Here.
Vice President Dedrick.
Here.
And President Lee. With that, that'll move us to item 11.2, which is a joint public hearing of the Elk Grove Finance Authority and the City Council, the City of Elk Grove, to consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the financing of public improvements and approving a lease agreement and related documents by the City Council, and a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Elk Grove Finance Authority authorizing the financing of public improvements and approving a lease agreement and related actions. Just a note to the public, as we go through this process, you will hear staff, and we'll be referring to the actions that are being taken as the city council, and actions that will be taken as the Finance Authority. It's basically two different kinds of hats that the council will be wearing as we go through this process, but we'll be clarifying which actions we're taking when. And with that, I'll hand it over to staff, as it looks as though the presentation is pulled up. If we have audio, let's make sure we have audio first.
Can you hear me, Jason?
You're coming in loud and clear. If you just want to expand out your presentation, everything's looking good. Full screen, or the lower right where there's the zoom bar, it's the fourth button down.
Yeah, I have that. Let me try it this way. Is that better?
Yeah, looks very similar to what it was before. Slideshow is also a menu option up above?
Yeah, that's what I have. It's on, it's a full screen on my end.
Yeah, well, let it rip, let's go.
Okay. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Jamie Bandi, Revenue Manager. I have prepared a brief presentation for tonight's item regarding the proposed financing for the District 56 and Old Town Plaza projects. So staff worked with city's finance team to develop a financing plan to fund a portion of the cost for the projects. The finance team includes Jones Hall, our bond and disclosure counsel, Fieldman, Rollup and Associates, our financial advisors, and Piper Sandler, our placement agent. Representatives from each of the firms are on the call with us this evening if there are any specific questions for them later. Together with the finance team, staff determined that a private placement financing would be the optimum funding mechanism. Just some quick background, we've kind of heard about the projects this evening. They were included in the fiscal year 2019-2024 capital improvement program, which was approved by council on June 7th, 2019. As you've also heard in those presentations, both projects have multiple sources of funding, including the anticipated funding from the proposed private placement financing. A quick recap on the project costs, the total for the District 56 Nature Area is roughly about $15 million, and for the Old Town Plaza, we're looking at about $4.3 million.
Real quick, Jamie, if I can interrupt a little bit, I'm wondering if you can close back out. I wonder if you're displaying your desktop and not through the PowerPoint, because now we're caught up with you. Yeah, now we just caught up, so.
I tried both of them, actually, and it, you said they both looked the same.
Okay, well, let's see, we're, right now, we're, seemed like you were gone, but we weren't moving through the slides a little bit, so it's hard to read the scrunched up words on the left-hand side.
Does it still look the same?
I'd say, carry on, we can see where you are with the proposed issuance is the title of the slide you're on.
All right, so Piper Sandler solicited proposals from more than 50 financing institutions. The city received proposals from five banks, including Farmers and Merchant Bank. After reviewing the proposals, FNM Bank's proposal was determined to be the most advantageous. I would also like to note that FNM Bank is a community bank that participates in the city's community bank investment program, and they were the only regional bank that submitted a proposal. Just going through the terms of the issuance real quickly, the principal amount is $10 million. The true interest cost is not to exceed 2.89%. The average annual debt service totals $820,000. Those payments will be made over 15 years, with the final payment due March 1st, 2035. So the annual debt service will be allocated between the funds responsible for each project of the total $820,000. $160,000 will be allocated to the general fund for the Old Town Plaza project. The remaining $660,000 will be allocated to the Laguna Ridge Park Fee Fund for the District 56 project. Additionally, the tree mitigation fund is responsible for $760,000 of the project costs and will be used as a one-time allocation to fund the debt service. Lastly, the Laguna Ridge Park Fee Fund is an impact fee fund, which makes the revenue stream volatile. From time to time, supplemental funding is necessary. In this event, the Laguna Ridge CFD and the Poppy Ridge CFD serve as eligible funding And tonight's recommendation is for the city council and the Board of Directors of the Elk Grove Finance Authority to approve resolutions authorizing the financing of public improvements and approving a lease agreement and related documents and actions. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions? I don't hear any questions, so let's go ahead and declare the public hearing open and open for public comment. Mr. Clerk, are there any members of public sign up to speak?
I'd not received any items prior to the meeting, and checking into my email, I have no signups or requests to speak on this item.
Okay, let's go ahead and close public comment and declare public hearing closed. Counsel deliberation and direction. If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
So Mayor, members of the council, this would be the time, if you want to go 10.5, 10.6, and 11.2, to take motions on those in order.
I would, I would make, do we need specific motions on that?
You can do it all at once if you want.
Okay, so I would move to adopt a resolution for the Railroad Street Improvements to award the contract for the District 56 Nature Area, and then the resolution authorizing the financing of public improvements.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion, second, and let's do a roll call, please.
So, and just to note that these are the actions that you're doing as the city council, and so for these items that you've made the motion for, I will start the roll call vote. Councilmember Wen.
Yeah.
I did hear a faint yes, so.
Yes.
There we are, thank you. Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Soen.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Dedrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
And we're almost there. We do actually have another item, which is that we kind of shift gears and change hats to be the Board of Directors of the Elk Grove Finance Authority. And there's a similar motion, but it is motion two of item 11.2.
Is there a motion?
To approve the resolution of the Board of Directors for the Elk Grove Finance Authority.
Got a motion, is there a second? There's a second, and roll call vote, please.
And on that roll call vote, Board Member Wen.
Yes.
Board Member Hume.
Hi.
Board Member Soen.
Hi.
Vice President Dedrick.
Yes.
And President Lee.
Yes.
And that item will pass 5-0.
Is there anything left? Did we cover it all, Jason?
I think it's just some official adjournments of these couple of meetings. So it's first this joint meeting, and then the actual meeting itself.
Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn the city council and Finance Authority joint regular meeting at 10:24 PM, and then let's go ahead and adjourn the regular city council meeting at 10:24. I think that covers it. Thank you, everyone.
Stay safe and sane, everyone.
All right.
Bye.
Good night.
You guys.